We convening to open session. We are at the Palos Verdes Peninsula High School District Board of Education meeting. And let's start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Lucy, would you like to?
Yes. I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so for the report, a report of board action taken in closed session. The board approved the settlement agreement for case OAH, case number 2019060164. By a roll call vote as follows. Suzanne Seymour, yes. Richard Phillips, no. Megan Crawford, yes. Matt Brock, yes. Linda Reed, yes. The district will provide student-related services and student waived all claims against the district. Number two. In closed session, the board voted on the readmission of the pupil who was expelled in case number D1-201920. And the roll call vote is as follows. Suzanne Seymour, yes. Richard Phillips, yes. Megan Crawford, yes. Matt Brock, yes. And Linda Reed, yes. Okay. Before we approve our agenda.
President Seymour, we, staff has a recommendation to remove item R1B, approve agreement with Helios for the Helios Core Software Assist Solution from the agenda for, to be agenda dized at a future meeting.
Okay. R1B. Okay. So that is going to be off the agenda. Okay. So do I have, with that, with that change, do I have an approval of the agenda for tonight?
Remove approval of the agenda for January 22nd. With the amendment to remove R1B from the agenda for tonight.
Second? Okay. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries five zero. Let's see. F1, approval of the regular Board of Education, no, we just did that, sorry. Public comment, public communications. The public, it's G1. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board at this time on topics not listed on this agenda. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The board reserves the right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. The board cannot engage in public discussion during this portion of the agenda due to the Ralph M. Brown Act. And we have some cards. Let me see, those are agenda dized. So right now would be the time to speak to topics that are not on the agenda. If we have anybody in the audience that is interested in doing that? No? So that part of the public comment is closed. Moving right along to G2, public comment on open session agenda items. The public will be given the opportunity to address the board during each agenda item. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes per person. The board reserves the right to limit public comment beyond a total of 15 minutes per agenda item. So as the agenda items come up, you will be called to comment based upon the number on the card that you submitted. Okay? So I know there are more cards out there, so please feel free to get your cards in before your item is called. Okay. Then approval of minutes? Do I have a motion to approve H1, the approval of the meeting minutes for January 8th?
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular board meeting of education take, that was held on January 8th, 2020.
Do I have a second? Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Motion carries five zero. Okay. Board president announcements. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is being recorded and livestreamed via a link on the district website. Our meeting videos are now being indexed for easier viewing, which we started after the last meeting. We would like to thank the PvP USD Student Artists who work, whose work is being displayed this evening in the boardroom. This artwork was recognized by the PTA as part of the 2020 Reflections Contest with the theme of Look Within. Also on display in the lobby upstairs is an exhibit from the PV High School Advanced Photo Class. New students enrollment for 2021's school year begins on Monday, February 3rd, 2020. For details about new student enrollment at all grade levels, please visit the district website at pvpusd.net. All currently enrolled PvP USD students entering 9th grade in the fall, in fall 2020 must select their high school of attendance on the Ares Parent Portal during the month of February. Students may choose to attend either Palos Verdes High School or Palos Verdes Peninsula High School. Information nights are being held, information nights are being held at Peninsula High on January 29th and Palos Verdes High on February 6th from 6:00 to 8:00. Additional information regarding principal forums at each high school can be found on the district website. Parents and students are invited to attend the Cornerstone Elementary Open House on Saturday, February 1st from 10:00 a.m. to noon to learn about the school's parent participation model along with the enrollment and lottery process. Merrill Last Intermediate School is hosting a VEX Robotics Competition on Saturday, February 1st from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. For more information, please view the latest news section of the district website. Okay. Now moving right along to J, report of our student board members. Let's have you go first, Lucy, since you weren't here last night.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Our Seekings have had a busy couple of weeks, starting off with first semester finals last week. A special shout out to PV's Be the Change Leadership Group for hosting Wellness Week, giving our students a chance to distress during finals. The Booster Club's Take a Seat campaign is finally complete, which installed brand-new sitting, seating in our NPR. Congratulations to Katie Hong, Beatrice Cabrera, Emily Lee, Sarah Shaw, and Dory Rich for placing in our district's Reflections Contest, winning awards for art, photography, literature, and music composition. Additionally, two Seekings auditioned in one positions in the California All-State Symphonic Band and our Triton Yearbook received top national honors from the American Scholastic Press Association. As for sports last week, PV High claimed victories against Redondo in boys' basketball and boys soccer and in boys' basketball and girls' soccer against Losinger. Our second semester started off full of excitement with a week of sporting games against Peninsula and auditions for our spring musical. ASB is currently hosting a Spirit Week for our upcoming Winter Formal themed California Dreamin' this Saturday at Madame de Sod's. The entire Seeking family is looking forward to another successful semester. Thank you.
Good evening, board. I hope everyone enjoyed the long weekend. So I'd like to start off with a special thanks to our Ling Crew Learning Center faculty and Nia the Panther Therapy Dog for keeping us all calm and ready for finals. First semester has now ended and we are looking forward to a successful second semester. In other news, I think this has been mentioned already twice this evening, but the PTSA Reflections Art Gallery reception for the entire PV district was held at Malaga Cove District Office Boardroom on Wednesday, January 15th. And Peninsula High students Kyle Baric, Juliet Belk, Sinogas Free Davin, Jennifer Espinoza, and Rachel Hong, along with other district council winners, had their entries advanced to the 33rd district where they are currently being judged for inclusion in the California State Reflections Art Show. And there's some art samples up on the board, on the wall. Also, earlier this month, Peninsula High Chapter of the National Social Studies Honor Society held an induction ceremony. Twenty-three new members were inducted into Peninsula High's chapter. Congratulations to all new members on their prestigious accomplishment. Our three VEX Robotics Team competed at the Robot Royal Tournament in Los Angeles this Saturday. Team 3050A finished the qualifying matches in second place and won both the Design Award and the Excellence Award, which qualifies them to compete in the California State Tournament in March. Team 3050B also won the Judges Award. Congratulations to all three Peninsula Teams. Finally, yesterday was our PV vs. Penn basketball game. And our girls varsity performed tremendously, winning with a score of 56 to 29. And our boys varsity kept the zoo on their toes with a close 48 to 40 victory. Better luck next time. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. So as you know, you are welcome to stay all night long. You are welcome to leave when you would like. We have a short agenda tonight, so you might want to stay for the whole thing. At least maybe the foreign language in elementary school might interest you. Okay. So moving right along to K, PVFA, do we have a report from CC? Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. I didn't have shout outs for you last time, but I do tonight. At the elementary level, there's a shout out to the office manager, Alexis Ignant Scuttleberry. Our office manager is out on leave and Alexis has stepped up to cover and learn our new tasks. Excellent and upbeat attitude and willing to learn and figure things out, which is always appreciated because as you know, that is a thankless job. PVIS, the, this is for the shout out for the whole faculty, their fundraiser raised in excess of $30,000. So that was a big win for them. At Ridgecrest, Outdoor Science Camp was a big success. Kids were well behaved and had an amazing experience, so I'm happy to report that. And then at PV High, Jill Mohler, Tammy Sheridan, Karen Kostrocenich, and Ashley Brockman. It looks like, it says the PV High BTC hosted Wellness Week. Students made art in the library, worked with stress balls, wrote positive chalk messages around campus, wrote positive notes to peers, participated in yoga and other activities in the mindfulness room. Sounds like a class I would like to go to. As you know, we are in support of the bond and we're moving forward with that. We made a donation to support with that. And I know I was talking to another board member about ways to get teachers behind the bond and support that in the community. And I think a biggest piece of that is, not to break anyone's heart, but I know not every teacher watches the board meetings, so we want to make sure that we get the message across and the significance behind why we want to get teachers talking about it. Obviously, we want them on the streets and phone banking if we can, but I know the biggest piece is really educating our own members and trying to get everybody on board and understand why it's to the benefit of all of us, ourselves as well as the students. And last but not least, I am making rounds to all the school sites as part of my role as president, so that's getting off the ground and I will be sharing the bond measure information as well. So, thanks.
Okay. And moving right along to L. And do we have a report from CSEA and Joan?
Thank goodness traffic wasn't five minutes longer. I wouldn't have made it here. Welcome, hello, Ms. Seymour, and welcome, board members and Mr. Ternus and Cabinet, because your board members are rock stars. Our Classified Shadow Employee, Shadow Employee Day was amazing and I only have photos really of Mr. Brock doing down and dirty work. I hear he actually, if they had given him a shovel, they were worried how far he would trench. But, and he even experienced a little bit of the fuss of the neighborhood that we get at school sites sometimes when we inconvenience them, which I wanted it to be a real day and not just a pretty day. So Ms. Crawford, we certainly missed you, but I know you work with classified staff every day, so you kind of know what our world is like. But I certainly appreciate all your endeavors for being out in amongst us. And I just want you to know, we had a chapter meeting last night and one of the people who you worked with stood up and said, actually, I would just want to share. And he said, it isn't like me to say this, this six foot two, 240 pound guy. He goes, I learned many more things about the board and what they do and the role they carry here in our school district, and I so appreciate much more what your role is here for our children. And I was shocked to see this come out of the mouth of someone, of a classified employee who's probably not really had much exposure to the board and what your role is here for the school district. So it works both ways and I'm just thrilled and I hope you want to do it again and I want to do it bigger and better and deeper next time. And thank you for spending your valuable time with us. And if you've got any other photos, I'm ready to put this out in some photos and I hate to just out Mr. Brock. The other issue is, yes, CSEA is in the middle of planning a phone banking evening for the bond and we're ready to get that going and pull people together and start making phone calls. So we're working with Megan Crawford on setting dates and times and locations. Other than that, really, we're just out and about and underway as you witnessed last week, so thank you.
All right. So now moving right along to M, report of our superintendent.
Thank you, President Reed, members of the school board. President Reed? President Seymour? I'm so used to President Reed.
That's okay.
We, we, we received the governor's budget last week and he is proposing a 2.29% cost of living adjustment, which is down from the original 3%. And so we budgeted for 3%. It's, it's down from there. There could be some additional one-time money to, to fill that gap, but we are definitely going to monitor this very closely. We have, as you know, second interim will be, by March 15th will be second interim. And we do have some escalating costs. As I've mentioned, this year, we've had some unfortunate infrastructure repairs that we'd have to, we, we had to put money into at PV High School and some other, at some of our other schools. So it is something that we need to, to address is the escalating cost for infrastructure. So I've asked Dr. Butler to, to compile list of infrastructure type repairs and, and solutions for that. And it could be something that we could discuss with the BAC as well. Other than that, we are, we are continuing to look at the semester for beginning next year, ending the semester before winter break. And that is something that we've, we've been having discussions with, with our teachers. And so we've had some really good meetings and Dr. Horvath has had some good meetings as well. And so we're continuing to have that discussion with the goal of developing a more student-centered approach to the, the semesters. And we think it's best for kids. And so we are hopefully getting a little bit closer to, to doing that for next year. And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. And now moving right along to report of the Southern California Regional Occupational Center Board Member, Matt Brock.
It was sworn in last Thursday. James Han is the new representative from Torrance. And we discussed and approved having PVNet. We signed a MOU with them so that now they will offer classes through SCROCK. It is an opportunity that the, the board was very excited about. They have a lot of programs that just cannot be duplicated elsewhere at any reasonable cost. We also signed an agreement for Ambassador High School to lease some of the space, which will generate about $168,000 a year for SCROCK. And as many of you are aware, any dollar that we get for SCROCK is substantial. I met with the director of the, the high school afterwards. They have a, an excellent program and looking forward to, to working with them on that. We will receive a financial update from, let us know. One of the issues that SCROCK has is we, they don't even really know how much each course costs. And they charge the district, you know, $1,234 a student, but not knowing actually how much it costs to educate that student. And that's the information that we're trying to get so that we can see where we actually stand. I would like to ask that our counselors continue to, to push SCROCK as a choice, as an alternative, as a recommendation. And then I'd also reiterate that I love to see updates on what our career pathways are here as a district. You know, we have, we always see how our kids are getting, doing, you know, getting ready for college, but I'm sure we have students who are going career paths. Let's find out how they are doing. I would like to see us more aware of what our students who aren't going to college and are choosing the career pathway are doing. I mean, they have some really amazing, they have a veterinary program now where they'll actually, students can actually draw blood, right? So if you're planning on going into medicine, it's one of those great programs that you could see if you like blood, if you like, if you can actually draw a needle before you, you head off to med school. So it was great. Very happy to be with them. It's a, I'm looking forward to, to good things ahead.
What kind of school is Ambassador High School?
It's a religious school. However, there's no, no conflict. It was all vetted through the, through legal, so there'd be no conflict with that.
It's a private school.
It's a private school. Right, right. Not, not a charter.
And what, and it's just high school nine through 12?
So it is, I believe it's just nine through 12, but then they're looking to expand enrollment and possibly go to seventh down the road. So right now, they are leasing, you know, X miles square feet, I believe, at roughly a dollar eighty a square foot. They found a, you know, happy median somewhere in the, the range of Torrance down there. And, but they're looking to expand their program over time.
Well, it's good that the space is going to education use.
Yes, yes.
Helps the financial issues that we all know.
That's right. Thank you.
So you mentioned the, signed MOU with PVNet, so then we, did we ever, we all agreed on all of what we're doing with PVNet and our schools and them?
So what will happen is that it simply says, now PVNet will bring forth that they have a class that they want to offer. It still has to be approved by our board that we want to approve it, and then it has to be approved by SCROCK as well. So it's not they can just bring in any program, but it is just that desire that we are going to move forward with them where applicable and where, you know, it can plug some, some gaps.
Relationship. Okay. Okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Yep. They missed you there.
Oh, of course, they did. Right. Uh huh. It's only, I was only there one year, so really, a lot of those people feel like they've been there for a lot of years, but I, I thought they were good meetings. So then moving right along to O, report of the Technology Advisory Committee Board Representatives. I don't know who's, that you guys? Okay.
I'm going to apologize offhand for this one. Megan asked me to, to cover this one and, but I overscheduled myself and missed it. Trent was nice enough to provide us with a cheat sheet. Megan was in jury duty, you know. So Trent provides the cheat sheet, Megan's going to report, and then Trent will ask answering questions.
So yes, I was not able to go to the last meeting, but it looks like a lot of good conversations happened. So still moving on with curriculum adoptions, which is nice. Also looking at streamlining software resources because those are included in new adoptions and just things that the district has adopted over time. So they're trying to streamline them so there's no duplicate's going on and really utilizing our, our resources wisely for that. PD for staff and teachers is continuing to happen. There's also a Microsoft training coming up for secondary teachers and they're still coming up with additional topics and sessions that will happen in the future. Also, there was a discussion on school-to-home communication and I feel like that's been going on for a while, still having that discussion. Different websites and, and tools where teachers, students, and parents can all kind of see what's going on in the classroom. And then digital citizenship, they're still kind of having that conversation about how we can teach students about that and, and online safety in general. So it seems like more good discussions will happen and we will continue to keep you updated on that.
Nothing else on that? Okay. Moving right along to P, report of board members serving on the Budget Advisory Committee. And is that Linda?
Linda, sorry.
Okay.
So we had a good meeting last week. I thought it was very productive, some good conversation. It wasn't totally well attended, so I'd encourage the members who weren't able to make it to catch up. Keith sent a great email afterwards that kind of summarized it for everybody. And the main discussion focused on a reserve policy. And we have some students here, so I will try to briefly explain what a reserve policy is, and then Keith will correct me if I say it incorrectly. So the district needs to keep money in reserve, like a savings account. And so there's discussion right now about how much that should be. There's one school of thought that says keep as little as possible and some says keep a lot for, to be conservative, keep a lot for emergencies, rainy days, when the state fails to give us money when they should, all those types of things. And so the board had decided to, instead of meddle through that on our own, to enlist the help of the experts on the Budget Advisory Committee and to build consensus with our associations and community members and committee members who work in this area to study things. They ask a lot of really good questions. Like us, they want a lot of data for comparable districts and Keith had brought some data. And of course, what do you think they wanted is more data, which is fantastic. So especially comparing it to high-performing districts like ours and then over time. So they definitely agree they would like to see a policy. One suggestion was, you know, there's a mandatory 3% that we have to keep. Would we add a little percent on top of that varying amounts to be determined that would also act in that same way? Is that pretty much how they decided it? And then the other interesting thing was Keith always presents us with a kind of one-page sheet summary that we use to see what our reserves are, what's dedicated, what's not, what's committed to certain projects. And there was a suggestion from the committee chair that there, we look at a, a way to kind of do that in five categories so that everyone can understand. These are the non-spendable reserves. This is restricted by law, so things like Title I money, that type of thing. And also that anything percent that the BAC recommended would fall under that. Correct?
They'd go under a different one.
That would go under, that would under a different one. Okay.
You're hitting every point perfectly so far.
Committed reserves are things like our favorite project, that payroll, human resources thing that costs a fortune, that we've already said we have to commit money to that. There's a category for assigned reserves, which is what staff would just assign, and we never do that here. It didn't seem like a lot of districts do, but there are some that do. And then unrestricted, what's available. So to really kind of show it, I don't think it would be too much effort to kind of reconfigure that sheet at all, but they felt like, the committee members felt like that was a comfortable way for them to see that. So they're looking to come back at their February 10th meeting and really kind of look at the numbers, right? And figure out if they can get a recommendation to us soon. The state, remind us what the state recommendation is, 16%?
Well, the state recommendation, or the state requirement is 3% of your total expenditures. The Government Accounting Standards Board recommends 16 and a half percent, which is two months' worth of expenses.
Okay. So that's what the conversation is going to revolve around. If anyone wants more details or wants to see some of the data, did the board get all the data from the other districts or maybe they'll, when the BAC presents it, they will, they can see that at that time? Okay. And that was about it?
Well, that's good because I know at some point, and Keith reminded me when it was, we were approving something and we didn't have a reserve policy. So it dinged us a tiny amount. And even if we had a reserve policy, no matter what the policy said, we had a policy, we paid less for something. We got a lower interest rate for something. I forget.
Typically, that's on bonds and so.
Right. So it makes sense if we can get this, right?
It would have been on the refinancing probably the last time.
Last time.
That that came up. So yes, this would help with the pricing of any new bond issuance.
So regardless of what policy we have, it helps us.
And there's also, also the discussion of is it a hard policy or an informal policy? And so some districts have a hard policy, some follow it, and then some end up not following it completely.
Right.
And then, or do they have more of an informal policy? And it's depending on how it's worded.
But for us to benefit, we'd have to have a policy we adopt, no?
Yes, you would have to adopt it, whether it's informal, like lightly worded, whether it's heavily worded, that you will do this and you will follow it.
Okay.
But there needs to be something in writing to get that benefit.
Okay. So it's the should, will type verbage that we're talking about? That's important.
Manhattan Beach, I'm sure you've, is there, was the article, they're dipping into their rainy day fund and will be below the, will be below.
3%.
The 3% state mandate in a year or so, right? So they're looking at 30 full-time employee layoffs this year and perhaps another 30 next year. And so that's, that's why these, these budgets and reserves are so important to, you know, Rick has always been a strong proponent of the 16 and a half. And you can see why, you know, we, we don't want to end up that way.
Also proponent of a balanced budget, which has been a goal of ours.
Yes. And we're much closer. Right. So, all right. Well, is there anything else, Linda?
That was it.
Okay. All right. Moving right along to Q1, approval of the 2018-19 School Accountability Report Card for each K-12 school published in the 1920's school year.
Thank you, President Seymour. Members of the board, before you, you have the school accountability report cards. These are compliance documents from the California Department of Ed. A lot of the data that is in the SARCS, as we call them lovingly, is populated through the CDE. So the CD actually creates the template. They actually put a lot of the information in and only the school-specific information like the principal's, you know, statement are the things that we actually put in. So each of those schools are individually.
are the things that we actually put in. So each of those schools are individually attached as exhibits for your approval.
Okay, so at this point, I'm gonna ask our members, does anybody have anything they would like to make a comment about on this topic?
I just had a quick comment, and that is if any community members or parents take, actually take a look at these, there's some really interesting information included about all sorts of things, but especially, I was thinking about this year, the state of our facilities. And, and really, some of the schools really provided quite detailed information about what was okay and what was fair and what was not so good in our facilities, which I thought was just interesting information. And it varied, you know, it varied substantially between the schools. So that was it.
Okay.
So actually, I like, I like these a lot because it's kind of a standard format that you get for every school. In fact, every school in the state has one that's similar. I guess all are on the same form in, in our district. When I first came on the board and was doing my, you know, visiting every school, the first thing I looked at when I went and had my meeting with the principal was I pulled out the SARC. So I encourage all parents to actually read the SARC for their school. I also encourage you to read the SARC for another school at your level, because I think that that'll give you some sense of the differences in the schools. A couple of things did stand out to me when I, when I read this. One which was, I guess, surprising and controversial topic, I know kind of at the intermediate school, is that there's a real disparity in the ethnic makeup of our three middle schools. And our three middle schools are based on geography as opposed to, you know, placement for any particular reason. So it's surprising to me that there is as much of a geographic disparity in the ethnic composition of our community, but it is. And so I know we're next talking about enrollment policies, but I don't know, maybe it makes sense that if we think diversity is good, that we prioritize, you know, requests for intra-district transfers that would increase diversity at a campus. You know, I think that that's, that's something that we, we could consider. The other thing is, as Suzanne mentioned in her board president remarks, is it's, you know, time for high school's choice for all those eighth graders, right? And so I'm, I'm a fan of people using data and making their decisions that, that are, you know, potentially affecting their, their kids' lives. I think, yeah, the SARCs are a great place to start. And there's one for PV, there's one for Penn. You can see some of the differences between the schools by just reading the SARCs. There's also the four-page college profiles, I'm sorry, high school profiles, school profiles, that are, are on each of the two schools' websites that are available at open house. There's also, I think we have the, kind of the college admissions reports for each of the, the two high schools also available at their open house. And you'll also hear all the information that each school presents at the open house, which is really important, I think, if you're gonna make it a, a balanced choice, to go and listen at, at each of the two high schools, because I think they're both great schools and they have differences. You know, and some are right for some people, some are right for other people. You know, the biggest one that is obvious for everybody is the block schedule. And I really encourage you to think about which schedule, you know, serves your child's educational interests best when you're making that decision, because I think that that is the most, you know, obvious distinction between the two high schools. But there's others that you can read about in the SARC, and I really do encourage every parent to read the SARC for their particular school.
Thank you. And Matt or Megan, do you have anything to add to the conversation about the report cards?
I was just gonna say the same thing that Linda said. I did kind of glance through all of them and, and reading the facilities and the different, the different parts, fair slash good, and then the overall rating. I believe every single one of our schools had a fair rating. None of them had good. So again, that just is emphasizing our need for a school improvement measure, especially seeing that for every single one. So I wanted to bring that up, and thank you, Linda, for bringing that up as well. But yeah, it's also interesting to see, Rick brought up the, the ethnicity differences and looking at, also even in enrollment differences at the different elementary schools like Dapple Gray, right, having so many versus the rest. And I know they're an intermediate, an intermediate school before, so they have kind of the space, but it was just interesting to see the size differences between them. And, and I know we brought it before, the CASP scores, but that was in here too, just seeing from last year to this year, and most schools were having some sort of improvement. So that was just kind of nice data to look at again. So, but yeah, the facilities was.
Much to go.
Yeah.
Matt, did you have anything to want to add?
I would just, to continue on Rick's point, if you go to our website and go to Schools and then select your school, that's where you'll find our report card. It's under Schools and then your school. Just have pulled up right now Cornerstone, and they'll have their school report card from 2018-19, which we update, I'm sure, once we've approved this. Question I would have, is, is there a better way to disseminate this information as opposed to being passive? Is it, would it make sense, because this is so important, and it does reflect what's going on at their schools? You know, we send out report cards, the students send out the school's report card as well.
Yeah, perhaps we can have our principals send an email to their parents saying our report card's been approved, and perhaps here, here is the PDF, and parents can choose to read it or not. But I think if we provide it, they're much more likely to read it than if we say, go to our website and find it.
Right.
We can find anything on our website in about a second. But the average person that doesn't go to our website every day, maybe not so easy, right?
I think Trent's the only one that can find everything on our website in a second.
In a second, right. I know, I feel like I look at it every day. So it is, these are all really great, full of all kinds of good information. And it really has evolved the last few years. It's so much better, that it's streamlined and consistent among all schools, that it's much easier to read, and it's much more meaningful when you can make, you know, comparisons. So our elementaries are a reflection of the community that they're in, right? Just like our middle schools are. So that's why there are actually quite a bit of differences when you look at what, you know, the programming and how they provide different things for their particular students. So now, moving right along, do we have, if we're finished with our discussion on that? Let's see.
Yeah, so I'll move. Let the board approve the 2018-19 School Accountability Report Card SARCs for each K through 12 school published in the 2019-20 school year as presented.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, five zero. Okay, so moving right along to Q2. This is the discussion and review of the district enrollment procedures. And again, if you have an interest in speaking to this topic, or any topic on the agenda this evening, I would suggest that you get your cards in quickly to Gianna. We have two so far. So the way this works is, I'm gonna open up public comment for this item, and our speakers can come speak to it. I think I'll actually do that after we hear the presentation that we're gonna have from staff, and then we will close public comment. So then at that point, there'll be no more opportunity for the public to comment, just the board will discuss it. So let's have our staff provide us the information first.
Okay, so just a little background. The board reviewed part of their, as part of their policy review actions, we had discussed this enrollment policy back in September, and it's Board Policy 5116, which addresses school attendance boundaries regarding address changes. So our current policy, which was adopted, the language which was adopted on in May of 2014, states that if students, if a family moves during the school year, and then they move to another location on the campus, on the, within the district boundary. So for example, if I'm attending Rancho Vista and I move to Point Vicente, if your child is, students attending grades four or five when the address change occurs are allowed to continue at that elementary school. And if they, if they're in K through three, then they will be placed the following year at their new, where their, their school boundary is for that new residence. So there was some discussion about the topic, because there's been different feedback from our community. And Mr. Brock and Ms. Reed had asked that this be brought to discussion for the entire board to weigh in to see if they would like to consider any changes or updates to the policy.
And I would add that we, we have a proposed solution, if the board so wishes. The issue I have with this is if you have a student that is, the issue I have with this is moving kids is not in the best interest of, of, of the student. And so if, if a kid's in second grade and their family moves, and the family is willing to have the student continue going to the same school and willing to do the drive, it's, it's, it's in the best interest of the student to be able to stay at the school they're at. There is some caveats to consider though, if we go that route, and we do have proposed language, if that, if the board so wishes, that we would likely bring to the next meeting to make sure that our language, so, so what we'd ask for is direction for the board to allow students to stay, because that is our recommendation, is to allow students to stay. We would have to work through the language in the current policy to make that appropriate. But there is some issues to, to consider, ancillary issues to consider, and that would be if a sibling of the student that we are allowing to stay, who has yet to enroll in the school, right? So would that soon then be able to also enroll in this current school, or would priority go to a new resident of that home school? So it is something we'd like direction on, if the board so wishes to move towards allowing kids to stay. We do want direction on priority of incoming siblings of the student allowed to stay versus new, new neighborhood residents.
And how many students are we talking about a year that are affected by this?
Both ways.
How many students? It, it just varies from year to year.
Order of magnitude, are we talking fifty? Are we talking five?
No, it's a handful. I would say a handful.
Yeah, it's probably a handful. The other thing you have to remember is some families.
Two through ten, is that a handful, I mean?
About twenty, twenty-five is what I'm hearing from my staff, so. Thank you for attending. It's between twenty and twenty-five students a year. That varies. The other thing we have to remember is, in terms of the, some families want to move. They want to go to their home. So the reality, it, it works both ways.
But you can always move, right?
Right.
If you, if you physically move, you can take your child to the other school. That isn't the issue.
What we would do is we would prioritize that family. If I, for example, my example, if I move from Rancho Vista to Point Vicente, and we know, we would prioritize you to try and place, place you at your home school, which was now Point Vicente, for example, to your new school, because you, maybe you don't want to drive, or you bought that house because you want to live in that part of the peninsula.
Okay. Well, let's, before we engage in a robust conversation, let's have our speakers who want to talk about it. So let's see, Jamie Wallstrom?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jamie Wallstrom, and I have three children in the PVE school district. My daughter, Kenna, is at Mont Malaga, and my two boys, Matias and Nico, are in seventh and eighth grade at Ridgecrest in PVIS. We recently had to move unexpectedly, and I now have to petition for Kenna to stay at Mont Malaga, the only school she has ever known. She has been there since kinder, and actually way before then, because both my boys spent their entire elementary school years there, from kinder to fifth. This is our community. Sorry. We know and love the teachers, the staff, the parents, the friends we have made since we first started back in 2012. Last year, several Mont Malaga families who moved and were in similar situations as myself and my family did not get back in. To even think of having to start over and leave Mont Malaga just because we moved within district, a few neighborhoods over, is unimaginable. It would be detrimental to not only Kenna's emotional health, emotional and mental well-being, but also our entire family. I ask the board to please consider the emotional and mental well-being of students and their families in situations such as this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, and Jenny Hanjian? Sorry if I didn't say her last name right.
It's like Han and Gin, like gin and tonic, Han Gin.
Han Gin, okay.
Hi, I'm Jenny Hanjian. Actually, no, probably several of y'all, because I've been on council and stuff in the past. And I'm just here to piggyback on what Jamie had to say. We lost several great families at Mont Malaga, and it's unfortunate. Families that had been there, one in particular, the oldest daughter had graduated, he was gonna be in third grade, and he wasn't grandfathered in, and, and they were gone. And they had to go to Silverspur, which is a great school, but it wasn't their school. And I just, for twenty to twenty-five kids, if this, and it's not a lot, to not be allowed to stay where they've been, what they know, where their siblings have been, I just don't see why, it just seems so unfair. It's not like it's hundreds and hundreds of students and that creates chaos, I get it. It's a handful of families every year, and I really, from the bottom of my heart, this is, and my kids aren't impacted. Like, we're in our zone, my son's in fourth, my daughter's in second, this will not impact us. I'm here for everybody else, and it will impact them, and it's for the children's well-being. And if we're talking about students' well-being and the whole student and the whole child, why, why disrupt that, especially at the elementary level? Like, they're so sensitive. Let them stay, let them be with their friends, let them be where they know and where they're comfortable, rather than forcing them to start over. And on that, I do believe, Dr. Turner, in my humble opinion, if you have a second or third grader there and they get to stay, the incoming kindergartner should get to go with the sibling and not get shipped off to Point Vicente instead of Mont Malaga, or whatever the example was, for what it's worth. That's how I see that, too. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, so let's see. Linda and Matt had worked on this in their policy meeting, so did you want to start our conversation about it?
Say that we just felt like it was something that, I don't even think, no, not Matt, and I necessarily disagreed on it, but we just felt like the whole board needed to have the conversation instead of just getting something that's recommended by the two of us, because I think there's, there's a little bit of complexity to some of the, especially some of the secondary issues with siblings. I think the intermediate part is, to me, is fine, that you can stay in your school, because there's a little bit more flexibility with intermediate enrollment. I, my question on the numbers, to go along with Rick's question, is just, how many kids in the district don't get a spot that live where they, at their home school?
Right.
So there are students who live in whatever area, the Mont Malaga area, and are they, are there not spots for them if they move in there with a kid in kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth grade? Do we know that? So then they, then they get, they go to a different school.
Right.
Yeah, we do have those situations for new families that move in where they have been displaced.
And that partly depends on when. So the later they move into that neighborhood, if it's like July, August, there's a greater chance that it's full, the class is full. Whereas if they move in earlier, then it's, they have a better chance.
Because my, my memory, and again, I understand the district is different now, but when my kids were in elementary school, you know, McCall was a parent at Silverspur with me, and you had to wait outside to get into the school because it was always full. So I, so that seems like for people that lived in the area, now it's probably completely different, and there's other schools that are more impacted. But I just want to make, I mean, in a perfect world, you could take everybody. Everybody that moved in would be in their home school, and then everybody that's already been there could stay at their school. So I'm just wondering how often it would be that there would be a conflict.
Like Dr. Turner's mentioned, we do the, the enrollment, the early enrollment starts in February, and I would say, you know, it's not a hundred percent guarantee, but usually most families that, that are enrolling in February and early do, do tend to get to the school that they request, that is zone. There's also a request for transfer process, so sometimes people have grandparents or where their work location is. There's also an opportunity that's based on space availability. So even if a family, if a family is displaced, what we do is we, we tag those families, and then what we do is we notify them in January to say, unfortunately, you were displaced. You have the opportunity to return to your, your neighborhood school. If there's, you know, you'll be the first priority for the, for the subsequent year. And we find that some families have already established roots at those and met other friends and, and, you know, parents, and they often want to stay at, at the place that they went. So we, we make sure we map it out very clearly for them to say, when you, then when you even matriculate to intermediate school, that's when you are, you know, going to your intermediate school based on your, your boundary. But at the intermediate school, you also have the opportunity to request for a transfer, too. So we've tried to make it, provide options for families because situations are different where they have, if there's a space available, ed code says that people can request that, so we, we honor that, too. So, but like Dr. Turner's mentioned, usually we have a pretty good track record of being able to place people. So, but like Dr. Ternus mentioned, usually we have a pretty good track record of being able to place people at their home schools when they, for early enrollment. It's like when you get into the July and August and September is when it's hard because those classes are usually scheduled and hard to accommodate. But we do a pretty good job. We always manage to try and make a lot of families happy, but sometimes it's just a, you know, space issue.
Matt, did you want to add anything?
Yes, please. So I was one of those. Silver Spur was our school and we moved in July and they were like, oh, well, Silver Spur's full, you're going to Mont Malaga. Best thing ever, right? And I love Mont Malaga. And I think that's important, right? All of our schools are excellent and what makes our schools are our parents, right? It's our parents' contribution to the schools. It is them making it their neighborhood school and they're vested in it. And so it is very important that we continue to build on that, you know, continue to let those parents participate. They put the work in, they put the effort in. I want to see that they, you know, get to enjoy the fruits of their labor. And also I believe it's least disruptive to a student not to change them. And I think that's what we should really be focusing on, is what's the least disruptive to a student? You know, you're in 2nd grade, you just made all your friends and, oh, I'm sorry, you know, our landlord decided to sell the house, now we have to move and you have to go to a different school. I don't see how that really benefits that student. The geographic concern, as I addressed, you know, all of our schools are excellent. So when you come in there, if you get one or two schools, they're all going to be great and it's not going to impact you that much. It's not like we're asking you to drive, you know, an extra 30 miles away to go to school. So that is why, you know, I felt very strongly about this change and, you know, but we, of course, as Linda mentioned, wanted the board to weigh in on this because it is, it's an important decision that will, you know, it will make a difference in some kids' lives.
Right. Okay, thank you. Megan, did you want to say anything?
So, right now the intermediate students can basically choose to stay or go. So they have flexibility. So do you find that the intermediate schools, most of them stay? Is that why there's not really, and like, why, is it because like there's larger class sizes that there's maybe not-
I find that the intermediate students tend to like to go with their friends is usually kind of the pattern we've seen of the requests. Some of it is transportation and sibling issues. You know, a lot of times you'll have an intermediate student who has an older sibling that may be attending one of our high schools and so it's, some of those requests are based on transportation, carpooling, drop-off pickup for parents. There, I would say there's quite a bit more requests for transfers at intermediate level. Some kids just feel a better fit for different schools, but that's probably, we see a higher level of requests at intermediate level than elementary. Elementary's pretty-
To change?
To change, schools.
So, and with them though, have you ever had to say, no, you can't and go against the policy?
Yeah, well, it's based on space availability. So request, so if there's space, we allow them to do that.
Okay.
That's really the only reason why we would deny a transfer is the space available.
Yeah, I see both sides to it. You know, families moving in and wanting to go to their home school, but at the same time, it seems like it's, you know, only that slight handful and like Matt said, all of our schools are great and the best interest of the student is staying where they are. And then as far as the siblings go, I like the idea of even if they're not enrolled yet, that they should be able to continue as well. I think that would just be really chaotic if they had to go then somewhere else in the future. So I'm in support of the changes that were proposed.
Rick? Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I mean, I think it's pretty simple. Yeah, I mean, we're talking not about many families in terms of a management issue. I'm all about family choice, so if the parents think it's in the kid's best interest to stay at the school, they should be allowed to stay. Parents think, you know, they'd rather attend their neighborhood school and develop a community of friends in the local neighborhood, they ought to be able to move to that school. So let the parents decide what's best for their kids.
Okay. So I think that we don't have anyone speaking to the homeowner, right, who just purchased their $30,000 house and now they don't actually get to go to the school, that they assume that they would get to go to because they saw that school, they bought that house and they're like, shoot, I don't get to go to the school. So I think that that is really where the rub will be one day when, if we change the policy, where you're going to have people say, gosh. And I think that in, like Matt's case, when it happened to him, right, the school that he ended up going to was very close by his house. Where this really does create a bigger issue are schools like Maricatalina. Because the next school is 15 minutes in either direction, okay? So when we can't get, so when you buy a house in that neighborhood, it is a huge burden, right, to have to drive either all the way to Hawthorne, to Point Vicente, or all the way to Davenport Gray. So, you know, that, I think that's just a concern. I'm in favor of changing the policy, but I can assure you that somebody else will come here one day saying, wait, I just bought this house and now I don't get to go to the school. So that will happen.
But that's also a delay, right? Because we do, for a neighborhood family, we make every opport-
Right, but it doesn't always work out.
Let them transfer in, max one year, right? And so, right, the next year they're going to get accommodated in-
Not necessarily. It matters how many kids are in what classes and what grade your kids are in.
Some of it's anecdotal, right, where you know someone. So I know someone who moved into the Maricatalina neighborhood partway through the school year, so not right away, who attend, their kids attend Silver Spur. This is not convenient.
Right.
But it's how it is because that's where there's a spot. And you understand, I think parents understand when they move in partway through the year, you kind of, it's a little bit different than-
Sure.
Than before the year. So it does happen, but that's why I was trying to figure out, does it happen often? And is it really, I don't even think it's really you against you necessarily, right? It's not, it's not that the kid from one school is displacing that kid.
Right.
It's just the school is full, so there you are with all people that live there.
Right. Except, well, so I had a couple of other things. So I do think that's a real issue. I think that a lot of times we can accommodate one child, not the other, right? So then you have to choose. Most people do not want their kids into elementary schools. That's, that's not easy, right? I think the distance issues are real. The thing that I think is super interesting is when we allow a student to come into the district through Allenville, they stay in the school that they are assigned to and they're never moved regardless of what spaces there is or there isn't. So we would never displace that child. And so we, because that would be really unfortunate to say, you know, sorry, the school doesn't have room, move somewhere else. But we do do that with people who live here who choose to move two miles away, which makes exactly no sense to me, right? So when I was reading about this, I thought, I had heard complaints about it for the last couple of years, but now I understand more of why we, when we changed the policy. And people do choose to go to other elementary schools other than the one they're assigned to for all kinds of reasons that I'm amazed by when people tell me their personal stories. So we can't assume, you know, I mean, people want to do what they want to do. That's fine. I do think though, that if we change this, we need to grandfather in all future kids in that family. So if your 3rd grader is there and you aren't even pregnant yet, that you do not have to have your last child, your 5th child, whatever child, go to a different elementary if you've moved. I think you should get to go. I think that family should get to stay at that school.
So, legacy forever?
Legacy forever?
I like it. I mean, I just-
I could do legacy for like, if the kid's not born yet.
Well, I think-
Why not?
Well, I definitely think-
If you have a 2-year-old, what's the difference?
I think it's reasonable if a sibling is enrolled in the school, right? Then that makes sense, because that's, but if the, if there's nobody in the school, in the family.
Well, what about a 5th grader's leaving and a kindergartner's coming next?
You know, I guess we will have to bring that back for discussion when we bring the language back.
For Suzanne though, I would support that student being able to go to that school, right? So I believe in the legacy, but not to an unborn legacy. You know, I think we just have to, you know, cut it-
I have a medium somewhere, so that must've been answered. Are they 2, are they 2, are they 3, are they 4?
Let staff decide what that magic number is.
Is it kindergarten?
But why? No, seriously, why? I mean, that's not in the kid's best interest to just say if a kid's not there, that they shouldn't go to their home school and be given priority to another school, right?
Well, a lot of this is family convenience.
No, but the more convenient for the family if there's no other kid there is their closer neighborhood school. It's more convenient for the kids, social life, they still can apply for a transfer.
I think that goes back to your parental choice. You know, if, you might say that, hey, it's going to be better for my student to go here because it's closer and you don't have that connection to the school that you used to have. But that becomes your choice and I really, you know, I don't think we're going to be talking about huge numbers here where, you know, the parents like, you know, my kid's been out for five years, but I want them to go there.
There is the fairness thing. So, okay, if I don't have a kid there anymore, but I had one five years ago at Mont Malaga, I'm just going to pick Mont Malaga since you're both from there, right? You love Mont Malaga, Matt loves Mont Malaga, everybody loves Mont Malaga.
Eagles rule, man, Eagles.
And you happen to live near Point Vicente, Beth runs a great school there. What's in the kid's best interest? I mean, so it's, wait, 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 let me finish. So it is in the, I think, in the kid's best interest in our general policy to encourage them to go to their home school, partly because that's the nucleus of their community. That's who they'll be growing up with for the next five, six years, however long in elementary and intermediate school. I still think we should encourage that. So do I want to displace a new family that moves into the district? This is where the rub comes in, right? From having that opportunity just because there's a legacy family? No. I think that that's the wrong priority. Do I want to allow a transfer opportunity that maybe has some intermediate priority behind a new family moving in? Maybe, right? You know, to satisfy that familial bond. But I don't think that that family that's been, that doesn't have overlapping siblings should have priority over a new family moving into the, into the area.
I would just recommend that it's a couple of years. You know, because if you are, just saying, you know, you've, you're a 3-year-old who's followed your, you know, your big brother to school every day and this has become kind of your school because you're there all the time. You know, but again, let staff decide what that magic number is, but with the idea that we want to look at least, not decide tonight, of course, right, but look at least some kind of legacy.
Right. But I, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. But again, if the whole parent choice thing, I feel like what you said goes against with what you just said before about the parent, the parent's choice of what's in their student's best interest. Of them staying at that previous school where their, you know, older child went versus them going to their new neighborhood school, right? Again, isn't that the parent choice?
No, it doesn't. It's a competing priority issue. It said they can still apply, right? But that they shouldn't have priority over a new homeowner essentially. This is where the rub comes in, right? That I've just moved into this wonderful Mont Malaga area. I just bought my house there, expensive area and I paid a lot to get there. I want to go to Mont Malaga and I'm being told I can't because some family whose kids graduated five years ago, I'm just going to use an extreme, right, now shows up and says, oh, I want the youngest kid to be there, even though it's not the same principal anymore, it's all different just because I'm a Mont Malaga fan. I don't think that they should have a coyote over that.
So I think what we're going to have to do is let our staff-
We will draft the policy. I can just give you a teaser. The policy will be written that the sibling priority is only for siblings enrolled. And if you want to extend it beyond that, then we'll have that discussion then. But the policy will be such that if a new sibling enters while another sibling's in the school, then they can go to that school. But we're not going to go back, you know, years. That's for you guys to decide if you want a grandfather-in legacy beyond-
What if they're in preschool?
We will, we're not going to go back beyond current enrollment.
Well, I do think that we need to let you guys decide, but I do think we also need to recognize that our parents oftentimes will have a child attend, say, a middle school or a high school and you'll say, oh, I didn't love that school. And you're like, really? They don't want you to try one of the ones? I already know that school, I know the system, I know the people, I'm not changing. People get very comfortable and that's why, exactly why I would say, you know, a 4-year-old or a, you know, pre-K or, would be fine. So knowing us, good luck with coming up with something they're all going to agree on next time. This is going to be a meeting you don't want to miss next time, right?
But if they're in preschool, they're going to be forced to switch schools anyway, right? Because they're at Vila, Mila, or the private preschools, so they're switching schools.
Right, is that- But that's normal, but that's normal for every kid in that school.
No, 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 I get that, but I'm saying that will they then, when they hit kindergarten, will they be able to go where their older sibling goes as well or are they going to have to be at their home school?
If their older sibling's going to be there, they can, they can stay there.
But then they're-
That's what we've all said.
If the older sibling has gone to middle school-
Then we're going to discuss it.
Then that's what we have to discuss.
Okay.
All right, good luck with that. So, moving right along. All right.
So then, just if I may ask for clarification on this, so you'll bring back this revised policy as is for us to approve?
No, we will, we have direction to revise this policy to give priority. And so we will bring back a proposed revised policy for first reading.
Okay. So, I'm just wondering, when do we actually approve, if we're treating them as two separate levels? I guess I'm trying to see, will this be able to go into effect for the next school year?
Yes.
Can I suggest that when you come back, that you provide us options on the sibling situation since the board doesn't have consensus?
But we did have consensus on the current student, it seems like, so.
But if they're not overlapping, that you provide us-
We'll provide you options on that, plus there'll be some other details that we'll need some direction on for people that leave the district and unenroll. There's a variety of things, I think we'll map it all out for you.
Okay, good. Thank you. You know, we like a lot of detail.
And we like numbers.
Yeah. All right, so then, moving right along on our agenda to Q3. Elementary world language discussion.
Great. Thank you, President Seymour. At this time, I'd like to invite Executive Director of Curriculum Instruction Kelly Keller to the dais who's going to help me with the presentation. Just to remind our board and our community, so back in August, we were talking about our priorities and one of the things that came from the board was to explore the possibility of elementary world language. Educational Services has been very busy the first semester and so we really wanted to take our time and really think about how we were going to do this. And so tonight, we're talking about what our next steps are. We are not committing to anything related to elementary world language at this time, but we did want to share kind of what our steps are going to be. So first, I just wanted to share a little bit about the benefits of learning a second language. And we know through research that learning a foreign language in elementary school, it improves a lot of things, including cognitive ability, it influences achievement in other areas, and it also results in higher achievement test scores in reading and math. And I put some research there, so if you ever want to look at it, you're welcome to read all those articles. And then I really wanted to look at the different models of world language at elementary. So there's different models that already exist that are recognized by our state. So the first one is the immersion model. And in the immersion model, basically some or all of the subjects are taught in a different language and the second language is used as a means of communication. So oftentimes at the elementary level, it's a 90% in the foreign language, 10% in English and really just immerses the kid, for a lack of better words. In our previous conversations, we said that we weren't interested in looking at an immersion model at this time. So I also want to share the other models that are recognized by the state. So foreign language at elementary school, FLES, because we always like a good acronym in education, is basically where foreign language is taught as a subject once or twice a week during the school day. So I would liken this to something like music or PE and the students learn to use and speak the second language. So this is something that would be like a subject that would happen during the school day. The last one is foreign language exploratory and that's FLEX is kind of what they call it out there. And foreign language is studied in a more general sense, once or twice a week. They learn about one or more languages and about the culture of the countries where the language is spoken. And this can happen either in the school day or it can be outside, it could be something as an enrichment. And so from the last conversation, you know, again, we weren't really talking about an immersion model, so we really wanted to focus in on the FLES and the FLEX model. So we are going to be convening our task force and the goals of the task force really are to review current models in other schools that offer elementary world language, because we do know that there are a number of elementary schools that do offer programs. Hear diverse perspectives on possible elementary world language options and then build consensus with our task force to really have options to bring forward to the board for consideration. And this is going to be our staff and community members who will meet to bring those to the board in the spring of 2020. So this is kind of what our vision is for our task force. So we have some upcoming steps, so I'll go ahead and let Ms. Keller talk about the upcoming steps.
Thank you, Board Cabinet. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here with you tonight. I am a parent of two students who are participating in world, or participated in world language programs, both the FLEX and Immersion, so it's a near and dear cause to my heart. So we actually have staff joining us on the 28th. This is primarily elementary staff. We have surveyed all staff members who are interested and then we have invited specific representatives from the secondary level to join us on the 28th. That meeting will be followed by welcoming of interested community members. We're hoping in our first meeting to really round out some ideas and some goals and some, I think, impacts that potentially could be with an offering as we look at our continuum of world language and trying to find out potentially thoughts about how that would transact and then going into our community to be able to be better educated about that and have a more rounded out conversation. And then ideally, as Dr. Gotanda said, is coming back to you in the spring to present some findings and make some recommendations based on the task force input.
So there's a lot of things that we have to consider when we're talking about world language and I think some of the questions were brought up here at the board table. So one of them is when? When could this or should this take place? Is it during the day? Is it before school? Is it after school? We might get staff together and they may say, we do have space in the school days. Some may say, we don't have enough- Some may say, we don't have enough minutes to do what we need to do. So we really need to get their input and help us really kind of understand what their perspective is in terms of when. And then which language and where? So are these languages that are already taught in our intermediate and high schools? Is it at all school? Is it just one school? What does this really look like? And then what are those implications if we do choose a language that is currently taught in our intermediate and high schools? What does that look like in terms of the pathway, right? So in terms of the skill and the standards that are being taught at the elementary level, does that align? We want to make sure that we aren't impacting staff in any way, but we want to make sure we're giving students opportunity. And then last, but not least, but very important, is financial impact. And so what is the financial impact to the district, if any? If this was a district-sponsored program and we were to incur the cost, what would that look like? And so obviously, you know, it could go from lots of money to little money, depending on what program we look at. So these are all considerations that we want to talk to our task force about. And then hopefully, we'll be able to round out all of that information. And if there's any questions or other input from the board, we can also take that to our task force as well.
All right, well, thank you. I have a lot of thinking to do. So I, we, for those in the audience, we have no idea what they're gonna present till they present it. So now it's our chance to reflect on that. Does anybody have anything they want to ask or comment on, right off the top?
Hi, so I know before that we decided to take dual immersion off the table. Is there a way to put that back on the table for discussion at all? Just like looking at different options?
Sure, I mean, if that's the board direction, we absolutely can. I can say as a previous immersion principal, I was a principal of a two-language immersion school. There's a lot of things that we have to think about in terms of the elementary and then the vertical articulation into the intermediate school. So I think that's something that we can absolutely, if the board wants, would like us to have that conversation about immersion, we absolutely can. But it is, there's just a lot of cost associated to it, and there's a lot of, I don't want to say, it's complex.
Yes, yeah, the reason why is after the CSA conference in December, I went to one specifically on dual immersion and how great the results were, and it is complicated depending on the way that you go and costs as well, and of course, not displacing teachers who are there. And so there is this, this option of, I think my notes got sent to people hopefully up here to look at. For example, Spanish, that they hired Spanish teachers in conjunction with the regular English teacher to kind of be their partner teacher. And again, that is cost of hiring, you know, more teachers that have the credential and everything. And you brought up the 90-10 way, and then they also brought up 50-50, if like the majority of the students don't speak that second language, it'd be like 50% English in the school day, 50% the other language. I'm just throwing it out there, I'm just curious what people think, at least to throw in as an option, and it, I'm sure it would probably be the most costly, but at least I would like to just see it, in my opinion, just so that if it doesn't, if that ends up not being an option in the future, at least I, I would know. And I feel like we could say, yeah, we looked at it, we can't do it, here's some other good options. And for us, you know, with dual immersion, it can be a school, or it can be a strand. I'm planning on seeing one in action myself before the, before the end of the school year. A neighboring school district does have a strand in dual immersion that I'm gonna check out. But I think as far as costs go, that that could be something that's differentiating for us to encourage younger families to move to the district, you know, something that's different potentially for them to say, oh, wow, like this, this district has dual immersion, and my kids could potentially be fluent by the time they graduate. Like, I feel like that that's a big draw for people, and you could potentially get your money back in the future with new enrollment. So that's just my thoughts of throwing that out there to look at for discussion.
Anecdotally, I love the dual immersion programs. My niece went through it and ended up doing an internship in Hamburg with the consulate, right? Because she'd learned German in school. For right now, I mean, because we are looking at redeveloping our priority standards. You know, so when you bring up, you know, teachers like, well, how are we gonna fit this into the day? You know, some can, some can't. If we are doing our priority standards, then it should be uniform across the district, so that it makes it easier. So I just want to make sure that as we're doing this, that we are keeping in mind that we are looking at what our priority standards are gonna be, so that might allow some more time for, for language. I personally like the FLEES program, you know, you call it FLEX, so I'm gonna call it FLEES. I like the FLEES, I think that that is something that we could implement sooner, right, than an immersion program. But with the, you know, maybe the eventual goal is to have an immersion program, but at least to get something on the ground for our students that. The last question I have on this would be just to make sure that whatever language we choose is very well thought out as to why we are picking that language. Because as you know, you know, language isn't just about the words, it's sometimes how the thoughts that go with those words, you know, there, there may not be pronouns in some languages, right? So it creates you to think in different ways. That's one of the things that we want to do, is just make sure that we are benefiting through this language as much as we can. So, you know, weird thing would be, you know, maybe we teach our kids code language. I know that's kind of goofy, but it's, the idea is simply, you know, to, to get them thinking, thinking differently and away from, from just English thought.
I don't know if Rick or Linda have anything they want to offer up on this?
Multiple thoughts, so.
I know, I said that hoping that, you know, I get lucky ones, and they'd be like, nope, nope, we're done, okay. Just kidding.
So when I was in eighth grade, I guess, and I switched schools, not a bad thing. Didn't work out for me that school, actually, I was good to get on to my high school in 10th grade. But eighth, ninth grade, went to a school, did, did, did join up with some kids who also transferred at the same time, who came from a French language immersion program. I'd had French starting in kindergarten, I had French K through 10. They were fluent, I wasn't, right? So immersion does work in terms of education. Their math, not up to par, though, because the, the, the French immersion in, in math instruction was different. So I think that there are some issues. What I would like to see us do in the district with regards to immersion is actually offer that during the summer. And I know PEF really controls summer school, but through the pep and the summer programs. I think that, that intense where, you know, you're in school for three hours in one subject, I think that that's a good way to, to teach foreign language, it's a better educational experience for our kids, and I would like us to do that. Secondly, choice of language, the, the FLEX is kind of interesting to me because it's multiple language. And I guess one of the things that I worry about is how concentrated our foreign, our world languages are at the high school level, or I don't know what it is, but it's like 90% roughly of our kids are in Spanish. And so as opposed to having a, you have a better number for me? Eighty, but, you know, we have, we have a real effort to keep programs alive in any other language but Spanish right now, because of the concentration in Spanish, which is a very practical language to be here in California. Not necessarily as practical in the greater world, you know, but Esperanto didn't work, right? So, so, you know, there's gonna be some, but there was more, I think, variety. And I think it's good to offer that variety. My kids, when they chose to take foreign language in middle school, they were in Mandarin. And I thought that was a good experience. In high school, one took Latin, which turned out not to count as a foreign language, is college, so you had to repeat a foreign language requirement in Spanish. And the other one took Spanish, so a lot of different paths. And I would hope that we would be able to keep that variety alive. And so maybe the FLEX way is a way to keep the variety alive. Lastly, I would like to propose a universal language, not the universal language of love, not Esperanto, but computer science. I think, you know, computer science and code language is more and more important in our society every day. You know, we do offer it at the high school level. We offer it, you know, extracurricularly at intermediate school through things like VEX and the STEM classes. We starting to offer it sporadically at elementary with like the STEM lab at, at Lunata Bay. The state is looking at K through 12 standards for CS. I'd like us to have a K through 12 curriculum in CS. And so I'd like to expand the charge of your group to include computer science as one of the languages that they were looking at in, in elementary as well. Because I do think that to bring us into the 21st century, we need to have computer science as a K through 12, you know, offering for our kids. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, very interesting, we are all over the place now. Ms. Reed?
I'll try to stay on topic. So I love foreign language for the littlest ones. Je parle français, mes enfants aussi, and I had them go, thank you, I had them go actually take basically a FLEX class on our own when they were younger, because I, it wasn't so much about the language, but it was about their thinking skills. So I, I really like that, the idea of doing it. I appreciate the complications, Ms. Leyback, that it would put on all of our elementary teachers very much. I, I'm not sure we're ready to go with the dual immersion route, and given our staff constraints on time, I'm just not sure. I like your ideas, Meg, and I'm just not sure we're ready to go there right now for a variety of reasons. I think you'd have to have a real commitment in enrollment growth before you could even do it, you know, kind of the horse before the cart, in a way. I like real languages, not computer ones. I'd like us to be communicating with each other verbally, and I'm not sure we can do that so much in computer science. That wasn't my intent in being really excited about this program, I guess, is how I'd put it. And my only question really is, when you mentioned reaching out to community members, how would you do that? And how would you make sure, like, who are you looking to get input from as far as community at large?
So we were gonna work through our principals to use their regular communications with their families to put it out. And so what we have right now for staff is a form that they do online, that they fill out, and they basically say like who I am, why I want to come, and, you know, they kind of give us a little bit of information. And so we don't ever want to turn anyone away, so really, if there's somebody who is interested in joining and just maybe sitting and listening, or maybe they might have some input, we'll work through our principals to get those folks to be a part of that.
Okay, so, thank you, no, and nope, feel rushed. So when we had the reflection ceremony here last Wednesday evening, when you walked around and listened, many of our families were not speaking English.
I noticed that too.
Many, 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 and I was listening, like, some languages, I was actually not sure. I'm like, so what is that language? And one child was speaking Afrikaans, which I think I've never heard. So I, I would like to know what number of languages our students speak in home before they come here, right? So many, 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 many of our students already speak two languages. Because many of our families speak, you know, a different language at home all day long. Many of our families have parents who speak two different foreign languages, and the child is speaking English, right? So we have a huge, a huge, completely diverse group of kids with all kinds of language skills. And many parents have told me that if you don't put your child in the Saturday Chinese school or the German school or Japanese school, that they lose those skills very quickly. And then you compete with soccer and all that other stuff. So I'd like to think about this maybe a different way, right? So how do we help those kids who already have family members speaking a foreign language? They already speak whatever that language is at home some of the time, and the older they get, the less they're gonna speak it. Because they have people to speak with, and they don't have to, right? So, and we have many multi-generational families in our community too, right? So we have lots of grandparents speaking that language. So somehow, I'd like to know, how many languages are our kids speaking? Like, you know that form you fill out at the beginning of the school year, what language do you speak at home? So I don't know if we have, if we could pull that information, and maybe look at the question a little differently. You know, like, let's look at this in a different way. We do not have any dollars to do much anything new next year. We're gonna actually do less probably when it comes to budget, right? So that's very tough when you come to dual immersion, how would you ever afford that? And I have read quite a bit about this, and my one child really likes foreign languages, and so I've read along just through the years. We know the neural pathways open up for children when they learn, you know, a different language. And if they learn two, it's a lot easier to learn three and four. We also know that we funded foreign language at the elementary level not that long ago for a few minutes a week, maybe 30 minutes a week. Did either of you even have that? I don't think, I don't think, I think it was already gone by the time you guys were in elementary.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you guys, was it gone?
Yeah, well, I think it was already gone, I don't think Luke ever got it.
I went to doppelgrau, and we did Rosetta Stone.
Right, so we didn't have a teacher. So I think your group is the, the group, your age group is the last group that, before we got rid of it altogether.
But you had it, yeah, through PEF?
So PEF funded the foreign language teachers at elementary for a long time. And people mostly said that it wasn't enough, right? You didn't get much from that experience, it was just so little once a week. So I don't want to do something that's just actually checking a box, because it's not meaningful. It's, I would say it's not meaningful to most kids. I'm sure it is meaningful to some, one or two who really, you know, pick up on it because they love it. My daughter learned French in fourth grade because the teacher was always speaking French in class in this public school district. And I thought it was cool, I really, she really liked it, you know, but I don't know how much other kids liked it. She just did it, not, not every subject, but just, you know, through the day. So I, I'm, I like the summer school idea that we would give people a chance to say, take three months, because if you already know whatever language at home, and you want, your parents want that opportunity, why should we not provide that? That seems like a really meaningful thing to do. But if we're going to do anything really different, then we need more information about where we would start. And this is gonna maybe seem a little crazy, but, I mean, we would be able to have a, an elementary school that is a immersion language school that was different. There's no reason we could not have one of our elementaries be completely immersion with whatever that language is. If we could get our community behind that, I think deciding on the language might be tough, to be honest with you, but you could do it lots of different ways, right? So I, I think that's got a ton of work involved, and that has potential. That would really differentiate us if we really wanted to say that was what we wanted to do. I think it would really meet a need too. I'm not big on being different just to be different. I think it would meet a need, but I, I, people tell me to this day, like, why don't we offer German still? We haven't had German in this district in a long time, right? Just saying, so, so it doesn't matter what you offer, people want something different. So I don't think this is, this is a tall order for you. But I appreciate you, I appreciate you working on this so we could get it to the agenda, so we could have this conversation, so we could see where to go next. And like all of our topics, it's probably gonna be a tough order to get us all to agree on anything, but. I'm looking forward to the meetings, and could you make sure we know the dates, especially the 2-18, like, so people can know if they want to participate? I think we would get a lot of participation from parents if they knew about it.
Two last ques, oh, sorry, two last questions. One, sign language, is that something that we could throw in for discussion? And does that count as a language in college?
Some, some schools, not all, a few, and not all.
At least, I'm throwing that in as a potential discussion, because I think that is a language that is important all over the world. And I think, I think, yeah, and I think that a lot of students would be interested in taking that if that was offered. And then secondly, so it seems like, do we have some agreement to, to look into the dual immersion? Or do you need, is?
Well, yes, right, Lindsay did say with board direction, so are you gonna add that about? I mean, I asked you, looking for a whole school, so I mean, you can tell us what you're gonna, what you're gonna do.
Yeah, at least the difference, because some, yeah, some ways are a whole school, right? And others are a strand within a school, right? The, the one class, K through five, versus the whole thing, so. And, and again, I know that it is expensive, and I, and let's just say hypothetically, we went with that. Like, there's no way that that's gonna be rolled out for the fall, right, obviously. But I think at least, it, I think it would be good to look at, because then the whole board could see too, these are the different options, these are the different costs.
And actually, I think what you're gonna get when you have your meetings are other options we don't even know, right? So I think you're gonna have other things. So I would open it up to whatever you think it becomes and bring that back, but I, I don't, there's no point in limiting it.
And my guess is gonna be staff and or community will bring up immersion, just because it's, it's the most commonly known outside of enrichment or, you know, a subject during the day, so.
I would encourage you, though, like I said, during the summer, to look at multi-hour blocks. Like, you think that, you know, the longer time you're immersed in a language, better chance you have of learning it. And then I think Suzanne brought up something else that's really important, which is the resources available within our community. I mean, we have a tremendous number of different language speakers, and so however we can leverage the great volunteerism spirit in the community to provide more language offerings and people that know the languages, you know, in depth to help aid in the instruction of our kids, I think that that would be good and would make it more affordable if we found a way to, to, you know, supplement it with volunteerism from our great community.
I think it's safe to say the, the board is still very excited about a foreign language in the.
I think it's safe to say the board is still very excited about a foreign language in the elementary level. So have fun, good luck.
Can I just ask a procedural question? If you could just attach the presentation to the minutes? Because there's no way for the community to see, it's not on the agenda.
Right.
And so there's, and it's not handed out. So there's no way for the community to see when the dates are or anything. So Janet, if you have mind, if that's okay, if I can ask if you could do that.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. Thank you.
I thought that was our process.
It is our, yeah.
Right, that we always do that when there's something that's not on initially.
Right, so if we can attach that to the agenda, that would be great. And with that, are we ready to move on to Q4? All right. Thanks, Ms. Keller, for joining us. All right, so Q4, these are our first read on these policies. And these were from December. And was this Linda and Matt?
Yes.
Was this your last meeting together?
This was our last meeting of our policy committee. It was.
You guys, this is so much work. I really appreciate it that we've had the continuity of having Linda do it with Barbara, and now Linda with Matt, and now this year it'll be Linda, I think, and Megan, right?
With Megan, uh-huh.
Right, so that's very nice. Thank you, Linda. So do we have any, before we move these to a second reading, do we have anything that we want to bring up here today to go over regarding any of the Q4 policies that are listed? Anybody? Of course, Rick, what do you want to look at?
So, just conforming language, are we the Board of Education or the Governing Board? Because it seemed like we've tended to use Board of Education, but a number of these are marked up to use the Governing Board.
Probably, one of them is probably from C S B A and one's from us, I'm sure. It's the same thing.
No, I know, but can we just, when we're revising them, can we, I think we've, we're trying to go towards Board of Education.
You could just search and replace, right? It's easy.
So can we do that on all of them? Then secondly, 5033, which is, 30, 5030, which is the Student Wellness.
Okay.
Are we doing this? Actually, Alex left, so sorry.
Yes, we do have Christina Lin, our Director of Food Services, here if you have any specific questions. But yes, we do run a Nutrition Wellness Committee and have for two years.
Well, so this has two committees though, right? It has a District Wellness Committee and has a Nutrition Wellness Committee, so.
Christina, would you mind coming on up and helping out on that, please? Thank you. And if you push the little green button there.
Thanks for having me. Good evening. They're one and the same. There is a District Nutrition Wellness Committee.
So the policy, to me, we ought not to have two committees referred to in the policy. And I'm looking on the second page here.
Sure.
The black is the District Wellness, and then the red is a separate, as I read it, Nutrition Wellness Committee. I don't think, do you have any board reps on your committee?
We do not. It's various stakeholders, including principals, parents, P T A members, staff. We'll be looking at additional student members for the Nutrition Wellness Committee. It is not a board committee.
So the way this is written, though, it says that it's going to include, you know, board members. And we don't consider it during our board appointments.
Right, no, I know. That's why I was.
So, so whatever, I guess where I'm coming from is, I think it's a good idea to have a wellness committee. I'm fine with it being, you know, the same, the District Wellness Committee, as well as the Nutrition Wellness Committee, but we ought to name it one consistent thing. And if it's going to have board reps on it, we ought to appoint them.
Right, we ought to get updates.
We want to comply with our policies, just like, we want the rest of the district to comply with our policies.
Should we change the language to the second red paragraph? The Nutrition Wellness Committee membership will represent all school levels and may include but not be limited to?
Well, usually, usually we say what are, what we want our committees to consist of, right? So that they consist of one person from the P T A, one person who's a high school, whatever it is. So if we're going to specify, you know, I think we ought to enumerate the composition.
So do you wish to have a school board member on this? Do you want to add it to the list that you assign them to, or not? We can go either way.
Right, how often does the committee meet?
Quarterly.
Okay. So this was revised in 2011, right? Okay.
I'm willing to refer to the recommendation of the Policy Committee Subcommittee.
I don't think it's necessary for a board member to attend simply because if there's an issue we just, that's of a grand scale, we discuss it as a board anyways.
Sure.
But that's just, that's my personal opinion. I don't know, Matt, did you, we didn't talk about that in the policy. But to me, it's not necessary, but if you feel strongly otherwise, I don't have a very strong opinion about it.
Doesn't it say though, also, like, the superintendent or designee shall permit?
It does above, but then down below, I think, is where Rick's talking about in the second red paragraph. That's where he's at.
Well, yeah, well, I think we need one, one, out of the four paragraphs, we need two or one, but one consistent thing for one committee, I think, is what we're hearing, right? And whatever it says, I think we just ought to obey it. And I'm not hard over one way or another whether or not board representative is needed on it. But I think we ought to specify what the membership ought to be a little better. That's all.
We could recommend just taking that out.
Strike through the second red paragraph.
Yeah, just trying to pick up if anybody wants to keep it.
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know.
Well, a board member can go to anything they want to.
Which I understand. That's the point, right? Is, is there any benefit of a board member sitting on that committee? And probably not. It probably just gets.
Also, how is it publicized? Because I mean, this is the first time I've heard of it. So how do we publicize that you're looking for members or that the meetings are taking place?
So the regulations, federal and state, for a district that participates in the National School Lunch Program is that the district must have a committee that meets regularly, that's the definition, that has representation from different stakeholders. That's pretty much as broad and specific as it gives you. Which is why the policy names various options for who those stakeholders might be. It would be up to the district whether you would require or have a board member on the committee.
It's only quarterly.
So my experience, if I may, is that we, I've always had board members on this committee. I think the option is here for it. If we do want to change that, then we may want to add that to our liaison list that we make each year. But I don't think it's a bad thing.
And I'm just curious, you know, when these things come up? Because we also have, you know, with various local businesses and the food coming to our schools, and there's fundraising, there's talk about fundraisers. I don't think it would be a bad idea to have a board member on there. I think that, because this thing, these things do always have a way of carrying over outside of just what's for lunch, right? It's, there's a lot more going on to it.
Well, how, remind me, like, the Technology Advisory Committee? I mean, do we have the same categories of every single time? I mean, that's a much wider attended group.
And that's probably one of the oldest committees that was established many years ago. So we didn't put criteria. We, it's open to all.
Right.
Have represented, so we, what we do is we, it's agendized, so it's on the website. And then we also send out meeting reminders to both the employee associations of the Palace Ray's Library District, all of our, some of our community partners that you've mentioned. And, you know, we ask that a representative attend if the, if some, if the regular people can't. So we can kind of get a good cross-section of folks.
Right, because I think it might be good if we would make it a little bit broader. Because it's, when you go to Technology Advisory, you do get input from people all over the district who talk about different topics. And I don't know, I'm thinking this would, the Nutrition Wellness would have maybe some of the same appeal. Or we, maybe we would get some people who do work in food service in different schools who might want to attend to spread information, to learn, whatever. So I, and I think having a person on the board assigned to it, and if they can go, great. And if they don't go, it's not the end of the world. I think that's all very reasonable.
Are your meetings during the school day or after?
They're after, since we do have principals as well as parents. It typically meets 3:00 to 4:30 P M. on the last Thursday of the month, quarterly. The district office, typically in the tower conference room.
So I'm not finding it listed as one of our committees on the website either. So I think that we need, we need to do a better job of, you know, both formalizing it and advertising it.
Sure.
So that people know about it and can participate, and that we know what's going on in the committee. Because honestly, I'd never heard of it till today, or when this, the agenda came out.
So we'll make those paragraphs consistent. We'll get naming consistent. We'll keep in the school board member part. And we'll ask Janet to add that to the committee assignment list that we do every year.
Okay.
And can you give us the current composition and the meeting schedule for the year?
Sure. And currently, the information is on the wellness page of the school nutrition page of the website. So if you go to Parents and Students Lunch Program, there's a page on wellness. And then the committee information is on there. But certainly, we can start posting meeting times. And it is open, similar to what Trent was saying about the, or, excuse me, was saying about the Technology Committee. It's open to anyone who is interested, which is why we have some students who have approached me, as well as staff, and they're welcome to join.
I'll get the dates for the Wellness Committee out to the board in the Friday letter.
And just also, like I said, that may be over there, but it's our only committee then that's over there, right? Whereas the committees in Trent's area and Keith's area, the other ones are on that committee. So just so we can, as I said, Trent's the only one that can find things in one second on our website. There's so much, but, so that we can make it more accessible to the public.
Okay. So that's a lot of changes. So do we do, do we still bring that, all the changes back for a second read? Okay. I just want to make sure it wasn't so many we had to go back to first read. Okay, sorry, thank you. Okay, anything else on, on these policies? Otherwise, they are going to come back to us for a second read next meeting?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Then moving right along to, and thank you for everyone for all your input there. Q5, Establishment of Dates, Times, Location for Board Meetings. So obviously, we do this every year. We were trying to get some things off the calendar for the future. Where is mine? I don't, I've lost mine. I'll have to go look here. Thank you. I can just look here, but I had a printed copy. All right, so did anyone see, we have a couple weird things because dates and times are odd because of the calendar. So this has us meeting at 5:00, and then usually 6:30 for open. So anyway, the only thing that's different here is the November meeting is the 18th. Because we have the November 11th holiday, right? Veterans Day, which would be our normal day. And we made this calendar with the Rotary Club's Teacher of the Year banquet in mind, so we don't have a conflict with that, because we have that conflict a lot. So we worked through that. We always have the odd meeting in June because of graduations. And we, yeah, and then we do have the, oh, we have two meetings in December because of the law change and when we have to finalize the vote that will have happened in the election in November of 19, uh, November of 20. So we're going to have two meetings in December. So this, the way it's scheduled here, the, this board would meet on the 9th and adopt the first interim. And then the 16th would be the seating of the new board that's elected in that election. So that was a difference this year. And we are following the direction of Laco. And actually, not Laco, but I think, was it Laco? It was Laco and the Registrar of Voters that told us how you had to get the timing right on that. So, because we don't normally have two meetings in December, but we only have one in November. So I don't know, if anybody has anything they want to add, subcheck, you know, anything that.
So I think we should meet more, believe it or not. And in particular, I think that we can always cancel them if there's nothing to do. But I think we should meet once in July, you know, either on the 15th, 22nd, or 29th. So, you know, it's kind of in between that and the August 12th meeting. And then I do think we should meet on August 26th, which would be our, the Fourth Wednesday of August. And would be a couple of days after school started. And I felt like this past year, we should have met on that day as well, and we didn't. And so I think that that's kind of anomalous and would propose that we meet during that first week of school as well, on August 26th. And I think that one will almost definitely be necessary. Whether or not we actually need the meeting in July, I, you know, we'll figure, we'll see. In June or July, we can always cancel it. But my, you know, my guess is that things will come up.
Right, but we did, did we meet in July this past year? I don't think we did.
We didn't, but I'm saying I think we should. And for example, I mean, this is a year as, Cece and Joan still here? There's Cece, there we go. All right, 1, 50% there. Thank you, Cece.
She hasn't moved. We're just in the car here.
I'll bring up the N-word, but, you know, negotiations actually are going to be taking place. And so, you know, I think that that's, you know, something that could certainly meet on, for example, in July, and would be productive. So that's my comments.
I'm with you on that. You know, when you think about, we typically have about 10 hours a month at most to handle all the school's business, and then it gets truncated over the summer. I was actually going to suggest something along those lines as well, but I was afraid of being stabbed by my fellow board members, so.
So I'll speak up then. I think, I think having, you can schedule special meetings in the summer when you need to, like we did when we were hiring a superintendent. I think everyone needs a little downtime, and this year is crazy for all of us. And so having a month that we know none of the, however many of us, 10 of us, have to be here, 11, counting Janet, I think is valuable. Because having special meetings are fine. You can always do that. Something comes up with negotiations, something comes up with a student issue, something comes up that Suzanne decides we need to discuss, then we can do that. I'm just not sure adding a regular meeting in July is something we need to do. I know our meetings can be long in the fall because there's just a lot going on. So Rick's suggestion about the August is probably okay if the staff can deal with that, with getting ready for the first day of school. But recognizing our staff constraints as well, I'd probably go against the July. But if you schedule it, you schedule it, and I'll be here.
So that's up to the board. One suggestion, though, could be to schedule two August meetings instead of one.
So August 26th?
Yeah.
So we have August 12th. And we met only once in August this last year, but we also had a special meeting. So we did actually meet twice this year.
What was the special meeting?
It was Monday, August 12th.
Oh, was that our, was that our board?
The goals?
The goals, yeah.
The goal-setting meeting?
We could do that in July for example, as well. But the, because I do think that there was business, and I understand the downtime, and that's why I'm saying not two meetings in July. But I think that we could make it convenient, right? So that we're not interrupting vacation time if we figured out, you know, the 15th, 22nd, 29th, which all kind of would be three weeks between meetings minimum, when that was most convenient for people's vacations, so that we're not interrupting things. But, and likewise, I think you can, you know, if there's nothing to do, we can cancel it. There's nothing wrong with canceling the meeting either.
I think we feel obligated to have it if we have to.
I understand Linda's, Linda's point about, you know, vacations, right? If you, if you know that the board has a meeting the 15th, it's hard for staff to schedule vacations in July. I get that. School gets out, I'm sorry, the last day is in June?
Like 6 or so.
Later this year, it's the 11th. It's the 11th this year, June 11th.
So we already have one on the 23rd. I mean, I.
We have it in June?
I'm talking 2021, we have one in June.
Oh, 2021. Okay, good, good.
I'm torn, I mean, I definitely agree with the August, having an additional one in August. November's short, that's only one. It's just, it seems that we have a lot to cover, and we have to be very selective in what we agendize. And I would like more opportunities to agendize those things that, you know, might not be the most pressing at the moment, but still are important to discuss. That's why I'm in favor of adding more dates, but I kind of defer. That's why I'm in favor of adding more dates, but I kind of defer to staff as to when would be the best time to schedule those that are least inconvenient and impactful to you.
I think it's pretty hard for our staff to actually squeeze a vacation, and do you go on vacation in the summer when they have so much work to do for the school year? Or do you go in the school year when there's so much to do all school year, and we have more meetings? I think it's tough, you know?
Which, I'm sure it is, I just, I want to give deference to them and their time.
I appreciate it, I think I can go either way. There may be some merit in having a July meeting, just if there is a, if there is a, a large degree of construction going on, it may be hard, there may be more items coming up on an agenda if we're doing a lot of work over the summer, which, you know, may merit an extra meeting. So, I can go either way.
Well, I would say that if, in the event that the bond that's on the March election would pass, we would have to come back to our agenda, our meeting agenda anyway, and change it, because I would imagine we would need more meetings to do a lot of work that we would have to get done in a very timely manner, but I don't think we even know what that would be today, right? So...
So for now, can we simply move, Rick, would you be okay if we just moved to add the August 29th meeting and discuss the July meeting next time?
Sure, but I think it's August 26th, opposed to Saturday, 29th.
I don't have the calendar, I'm trying to...
And we will definitely add a July meeting if we need to. I think the first year I was on the Board, we met, and we met the second year all summer, so if we need to, we will. But I think it's good for us to be able to plan around that too. So I think the 26th makes sense. I really hope that the December and November, that Dr. Chernus and I have had so many discussions about how we're planning ahead, that we'll do a better job, because December is usually really rough with so many things. But we have the two meetings, and like this thing right here, this board meeting agenda thing, we would normally do this, you know, in March, so we're doing it in February this year, I mean, are we in January? So we're ahead of the game, just saying, I pulled it ahead. So we're trying to, you know, work ahead, so we have meetings at last, less time. So let's add the 26th of August and go with that if we're good, and then if we need to add, we will. Yes?
I'll move that the, that the Board established these meeting dates as agendized, with the exception of the addition of an August 26th meeting.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5 to 0.
I just want to say something for, for future, I think that, I understand that people want more meetings, but I think it's for the July one, I'm glad that we ended up not adding that one, because I think it's too short of a time period to tell staff potentially if they had vacations already planned during that time, during July, since they, you know, when you get the, when you get the year in advance for this, and they're planning months ago potentially to have a vacation in July, to then expect them to show up to a meeting that's a few months from now, and they could have already booked all this stuff and paid money. So I think that for future, if people wanted a July meeting, it would be better to then say it now for, for example, 2021. Just my thought for future reference.
Think of how our parents feel when we set calendars after spring break.
Yes, yeah, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there. Well, we've already had this vote, so we need to move on and stay on the agenda, people. So, now we are on to the consent calendar, okay?
Oh, boy.
Well, that was a ominous comment, okay? Great, okay, now I have my papers everywhere, I don't even know where I'm going here, hope we QR. All right, so. Matt, do you want to pull anything from the consent calendar?
I would like to pull R3C, R3D, R3F, and R5A.
R3C, R3D?
R3F and R5A.
Okay. Maggie, nope, nothing, okay, and I have nothing, and Rick, anything to pull?
R2CD and E.
C, D?
And E, it's, it's all one set.
B, C?
R2CDE, the overnight field trips.
Oh, yeah, it, it looks weird here.
It's got a typo, but...
Yeah, okay, I'm like, wait, why does that look weird? Okay, that's why.
And R1B is already deleted from the agenda, right?
Yeah, yeah, okay, Linda, anything for you?
I was going to pull R3C, that I, I had indicated that in my notes to the staff. Ahead of time is what I'm saying. I was going to pull that, and I still need to talk about it, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, let's see, if we can get a motion to approve R1A, R2A, R2B, R2F, R3A, R3B, R3E, R3G, R4A, R4B.
I move, oh, just some, oh, that's an easy one.
Okay, second.
Second, done.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
That passes 5-0. So now, let's go down the line here, so let's just start with Rick, with R2CD and E.
Yeah, so what struck me on this is that all three of these are trips from Penn to the Bay Area. Two of them cost $800 per student, roughly, one of them costs $600 per student. Two are on charter bus, which actually is the $800 trip. One's on the airplane, which is a $600 trip. I assume the airplane's kind of a slightly better travel experience for our kids. My question is why? And, you know, if we can do it for 600, and that'll cost only, you know, I know it's not our budget, but the families can't, can't it be done for 600 for, for them? So I was just gonna throw it back to you and work with the staff to see if we could get something more in common across those trips.
So we can do that, so I did talk to staff already today about the field trips and the costs. So what they've done is they've deferred to the teacher, whoever sponsors the activity, to make those decisions with the family and the students. And so, there are times where if they're driving, you know, they'll stop off at Berkeley or whatever, you know, make a, make a pit stop at a college or whatever it might be. So that was what the staff told me, but if we are looking for the most economical way to do that, then if that's forward direction, then I can work with staff.
This is PV Penn High School Speech and Debate, which is already our most expensive club on the Hill, so $800 is nothing.
But both clubs are pretty expensive, actually.
This one is far and exceeds the most expensive.
Okay, well, the, I mean, they're not, you know, one's going to Stanford, the other one's going to Berkeley. I'm sure hotel rooms, the costs of hotel rooms are different at different times too. I mean, there's a lot of things I'm sure that go into this that we don't know necessarily about. So I do know in the past, these groups have stopped at colleges on the way, so that may be why they take a bus, I don't know. So anyway, I think, as you know, we always want more information. So if you can help us with more information when things seem like they are not lined up correctly, you know, that'd be useful, I think, but...
So process-wise, do I understa, I mean, clearly, I'm in favor of both these groups going on these trips.
Yeah, perhaps so.
But process-wise, does it make sense to, at least at each site, to have some better coordination of best practices ongoing these field trips, keeping in, and if they're, you know, stopping, if the, I don't think either of these trips actually is lengthened for the college stops. I do remember a couple with a sports team last year where that, that did occur when we had the question.
If they are lengthened to a stop, should we not also be made aware of those stops? Are we not also responsible for what happens on those stops? We're not?
Well, the entire time, they may top our gas, they stop our food, they stop our living.
The history is that the Board approves the, the trip.
Right.
We haven't had Board-approved specific day-to-day activities.
And this one, that's March 8th, I mean, they must have probably had somehow gotten somebody to block tickets if they are doing airline tickets, and this is not even approved yet, so they, and they're getting a really good price. So, so maybe somebody had some kind of an opportunity to make it less costly, I'm not sure. But yes, I think we always want more information.
And, and a, and to me, at least, that our, our students are treated roughly the same, right? You know, so that if some kids get to travel by air, especially if it's cheaper, I would think that, that we try and let that happen for, for more students rather than less, so... I, I don't know if there's a way to improve the site process to allow that kind of, you know...
We'll, we'll look at it.
Okay, so, now, Rick, do you have enough to make a motion to approve those?
I'll, I'll move that we approve items R2CD and E.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, thank you, Linda, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? That motion would pass 5 to 0. Now, Linda, let's have you go to R3C.
Okay, so this is one that, that the school site staff engaged in, and we didn't approve it ahead of time, because the district staff doesn't have ESP and didn't know that this was going to take place. So, so I've heard from a lot of parents on this, even though the event already happened, and that the company putting on the fundraiser takes a third of the money, that's not good. And so, some of what they do, I looked at their website, and they do a lot of activities to associate with the fundraiser. Some of it is with this PBIS Behavior Program, which we've spent a lot of money training our staff to do. I don't really think we need random people who we don't have an even background check showing up at our schools doing these programs with this fundraiser. So that's something I would have liked at least to have known about ahead of time. I don't think this company's great to use. Two of our elementary schools ran programs with this that we never knew about, because we, it was never brought to the, to anyone's attention. And again, the amount that they're taking back is huge, and it's very easy to do these kind of activities without the overhead of all of this. That's just my personal opinion, so I just can't vote to approve this. I don't want the liability if there's someone comes back three weeks later and says, "This is a horrible experience." I just don't want us to have anything to do with this. So I just, I just pulled it, because I don't want to, I can't vote for it. And there were a lot of parents that didn't participate, because they thought it was ridiculous that a third of their donation was going to some company.
So what happens if we don't approve it, given that it's already happened?
Right.
I think we actually run into a problem with the use of the funds that come forward from there, because I would not be comfortable to say to the school, "Go ahead and buy those things that you want to do" with funds that were raised through the district and the Board hasn't approved of it. My suggestion is, and Dr. Chernus and I have talked about this, is that going forward into the next school year, we make sure that we've got the box around everything, everyone's properly notified, and at that point then, if they don't get it approved in advance, you could refuse it. But I'm thinking, this one started actually May of 2019, even before we were having Board conversations around the percentage that was going to some groups, a contract was signed on this a while ago, so...
Okay, and we also don't have the contract, so we're approving something that we haven't even seen, so...
Okay, I'm, so that's Dr. Chernus, and I got him the information, but probably too late to get out to the Board here today. So I did have the other page of the contract, I had no issues with that in general in terms of a contract. The percentage, I agree with you, it's, in my personal opinion, it's much too much to pay for fundraising.
So it's a contract that was signed for an event that's already taken place?
That's correct, and it was signed by the boosters, because they were running it, so PVPHS boosters actually signed it.
PBIS.
And they signed, and they signed it a year ago.
Uh, May of 2019.
So, this...
So did you pay for it?
There wasn't payment for it, because it was all based on the fundraising.
A third of the fundraiser money raised is, and I don't want to hurt this school or this, this student, so I, I get that part. I just, I would at least like some direction to our, our principals, or whoever's deciding, our booster clubs, or whoever's deciding this stuff with principal approval, that, that they really need to look at what's going on here and be really, really open with their parents about where the money is, is going to.
So I understand what you're saying, but also understanding the circumstances here in Keith's issue with accepting it, but couldn't we, you know, the ASPs on the hook, right? They're the ones that are the party of the contract, couldn't we accept a gift? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the Booster Club, ABC, or whatever, the Booster Club, PBIS Booster Club.
Well, it's, this is...
So, so, so they're the, we don't need to approve the contract, they signed the contract, but could we then still accept a gift from the Booster Club of the funds to deal with Linda's, you know, concern that we didn't approve of, you know, the contract? And I'm not really happy that we were being asked to approve a contract that was signed, you know, 10 months ago or whatever.
I, I don't understand where the, the fault lies that if it was signed back in May of 2019, and it's now January of 2020, why we, why it's just coming up now? There's, that's a pretty significant systemic fault that that happened. And the fact that, you know, they said, "Oh, we're going to raise $35,000," you know, that's 41% that we're giving them. Plus, on top of that, there's fees of PayPal or $1.50 for your transaction. They provide students with T-shirts that have Anython, right? So they're, they're advertising, promoting their own company by giving our students T-shirts. If our students weren't, didn't donate, they were actually relegated to spend time in study hall. So we were excluding students who did not pay this for-profit company.
Actually, let me address that, Micah did give me the information on that today. They weren't segregated to a study hall, there was a movie that was available, whether you wanted to participate or not, for whatever reason.
Okay, but, but that was not made clear to the students, so that might have been retroactive. You know, this, my daughter comes to me and she's like, you know, "Dad, I need $30, $30, otherwise I have to go to study hall." I'm like, of course, so I paid it, and that, but I knew who this company was, and I was mad the whole time I'm paying it. Our students should not be receiving preferential treatment because they donate or do not donate. That should be a fundamental thing. This was promoted, you know, with class competitions and so forth. This was purely generated as a money raiser for Apex. I would actually like to move as a Board that we put a moratorium on any Apex contracts for the next year minimum.
That was my suggestion, Matt, I'm all with you. You can't, you can't, you can't do that, you can't treat your kids that way, it's not acceptable.
You cannot, and I am, I'm furious.
And the fact that we, two of us found out about this, because we happened to, you have a kid at the school, and I talked to kids at the school, it's just not, and I can probably say a little bit more, because I don't have a kid at the school anymore, it's, it's not acceptable, it's not, it's not a way to treat our students, it's not a way to raise money, there are plenty other ways to have, raise money for fundraisers that are way smarter. And it's not, and I'm, I'm sort of preaching to the choir, because I, I'm sure that you and your Cabinet agree with what we're saying.
The issue I have, though, is, I'm 100% with you, but then I hear, you know, from other PTAs, like, oh yeah, people have talked about using Apex, because it's an easy, quick way to make money, but we shouldn't be making money off of our students' backs, and we shouldn't be doing it to the detriment of our students. So I, I'm very, you know, concerned, Rick, I have the same question that you do. What happens if we don't approve this? You know, who, where does the money go, what happens? I want to know why, we are just being brought this now after 10 months, and we definitely discussed months ago that this kind of fundraising, you told me that anything over 20%, right, really got scrutinized, and here we're at, you know, 41% plus fees, it's ridiculous.
Why don't we do this, then, why don't we make sure that the, that the money that was raised, that the students raised for these items that are needed, can, make sure that that can get to the right place, and we can just say going forward that we prefer, that we not like to use Apex going forward, so that doesn't penalize the work that was done, but going forward, you know, we're not, we wouldn't use that.
We can, we can have a motion come back in the future, that we will not do business with Apex, period, and let every booster, PTA know, that is not an option that this district's going to entertain.
Yeah, and I think, I think it, I think there's an education piece that we need to have this conversation with, with the, the parents that had good intentions, right? To, to put this on.
And they might not have known that that's how it works.
This is, this is not against any parent, for sure. I mean, if, if you're told that, hey, we can come in, we can raise this much money for you, you don't really have to do anything for it, it's kind of a no-brainer, but it's when they're starting to do things that we have specific policies against, the, the parents aren't going to know, and that's where it comes down to why, as a Board, we should be approving contracts before they are implemented, and not retroactively, because then we can also, along with Cabinet and the Superintendent, be the stewards and the safeguards against predatory companies like this.
And we honestly are much better at approving contracts earlier in the cycle than we have been. I think this, because it was last May at the end of the year, definitely falls into a change of leadership at the school. And so, the new principal probably didn't know about it, I mean, he wasn't there when, you know, so...
Again, this isn't, I, I'm not directing this anger towards the principals, to anybody. This is, this is purely, this is a company who is taking advantage of a lack of education, a lack of experience in dealing with them.
How about this, how about if you choose to approve this, to take care of this one, that's fine. I can send out something to all the principals, saying, "Please inform me of any fundraising contracts that you currently have in place that I may not know about, let's at least get everything out."
Good, it's a great idea.
And then secondly, if you have any that are scheduled to be of a model similar to Apex coming up that you're discussing, please talk to me first, and we'll talk it through and see if there's a way that it might be acceptable to the Board or not. But let's talk first.
Actually, if, I was worded that the Board is not in favor of contracts that, or that... that model, the Apex model.
Right. So now, do we have to approve this agreement to have the money come, Apex probably does not care if we approve it or not.
Because they have our money.
Well, do we have our money back from them?
So we would have collected the money and, or they have collected on their website.
They would have collected on their website.
I don't know how it works.
Right, because that's why they're charging us $1.50 transaction plus PayPal.
I, I think we should just let the staff come back to us with a recommendation on how they want to patch up the situation.
If it's retroactively, there's no timeliness of the item, by definition.
Right.
I think, Dr. Butler, if you can just talk to our auditors and see if there's a way to book this through Booster or whatever, and we'll come back. We'll come back with it.
Thank you. That'd be great.
So we're tabling our, are you pulling it or we're going to table it?
Uh, we are.
No motion, as well.
No motion.
It's not a consent calendar, so there is actually.
That's for lack of motion.
It's on consent, so.
But we pulled it from consent. So if somebody wants to make a motion to table it, or do.
Okay, I move that we table R3C, the Palace Verdes Intermediate School, ASP's Color Battle fundraiser.
Okay.
Second.
All right, great. Thank you for the second. And all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? That passes 5-0. To table, yes. So then, Matt has R3D and R3F.
And R5A, but I'm going to go with.
R5A, sorry. My arm's covering.
R3D is just the amendment to lease with Verizon Wireless, and that is something that I think we really need to scrutinize, what they're going to use. And I should have put this, admittedly, I should have put this in the Friday Letter. I just, I missed my opportunity, so I'm not expecting, you know, answers now. However, you know, is this going to be, you know, a 5G small cell? You know, what, I'm just really personally not comfortable having cellphone towers on our schools unless we know truly what the impacts are, and I think it just warrants a little bit more investigation as to, you know, are these things truly safe? I mean, you have some people on one side who scream that they're, you know, 100% safe, and you have others on the other side who say that, you know, these, these are not safe. And I am just simply not comfortable making a decision on that without a little bit more further information.
Well, as I wrote in the Friday Letter, there's no change to the equipment. They wanted to change the equipment, and we could not work that out in a way that was a pre-approved by the cities as well. So what we're doing is the equipment that's been there for 20 years, we would like to continue the lease on.
And it has such bad cell service, that is it actually regarding cell phones?
It is.
Wow.
But I don't think, I don't think the lease extension contains language that prohibits them from changing the equipment.
I mean, if that, I would imagine the lease extension, if this equipment fails, they're not going to replace it with 20-year-old equipment. So.
But, but, but they're, but, I mean, whatever they put in 20 years ago, really, I don't even know what that would be, right? So.
All I'm asking for is a little bit more information as to, to the health and wellbeing for our students regarding wireless, and then, you know, to ensure that, you know, who knows how equipment responds after 20 years? So that's, I, okay, so I'm going to make a motion to table R3D for lack of information, even though that was my own fault for not writing it in the Friday Letter.
So if you can let me know exactly what information you're looking for, I'll be happy to ask the company.
I, I'm looking for essentially peer-reviewed, you know, safety of equipment when placed on school sites. You know, what is the, the health impact? And of course, they're going to come back and say that there's none, but there are others out there who say that, you know, it's best not to have cellphone equipment on schools, and other districts don't allow cellphone equipment on their schools. So I guess that's what I'm looking at, is just.
I think what, specifically what we need to ensure, we need clarity on the equipment that they.
There'll be change to the equipment.
Yes.
Or what equipment do they have there now? And some school districts make money off of allowing cellphone companies to put cellphone towers on schools.
Right, which is, yeah, this is.
So that's a different option.
Right, so this is $48,000, and, you know, we have other sites that are acreage, you know, we have sites that are empty. I would, if we were going to go that route, I would recommend that we do it as far away from schools as we, as we can.
Right.
But that's, it's not like they can just put it anywhere. It's a coverage issue.
Right.
But, but I think that the right restriction to put in the amendment is that whatever equipment is there will have EMF emissions no higher than the current equipment at the site. If we want to talk about banning the equipment, I think that's a different conversation. And I don't think we've done that at any of our sites. I don't even know how many of our sites have, have cell equipment.
For what I know, this is the only one. There, where we're not paying any rents for, we're not receiving any rents for any others.
Okay, but I don't, I don't.
We may have stuff stuck up somewhere.
I mean, there's pretty big microwave towers right by Penn High, for example. I don't know if it's on our land or not, but, so, I, I don't know. I, I think it's, I think the whole EMF thing's a kind of a can of worms, right? So are we only talking about cellular? Are we also talking about, you know, transformers for, for electricity, right? And so.
I just, to me, this is, this is an opportunity for us to take a look and say, is this what we want on our schools?
I, I think it's a can of worms, like I said. I, I've listened to a couple of the cities, various cell site location things, and it's a can of worms.
I understand it's a can.
That's why I said to them.
One of the reasons I'm not on city council and have no intention to be on city council.
That I had no interest in talking about further equipment unless they already got it cleared through the cities and EMF with them. Let the cities do that work first, but.
But I do think that the right restriction is no, no, you know, no increased EMF on the, you know.
Got it.
In terms of the extension, at least in my opinion, so.
That's one board member, though. So I think we first need clarity on the equipment, right? And so we're getting direction on that to clarify no new equipment, or if there is, then how does that work? Because this item states no new equipment. So we need clarity on that. And then, Board Member Brock's asking about clarity on data or research.
Right, especially if this is 20 years old, there should be a lot of research on 20-year-old equipment.
And then, yeah. So if there is new equipment, is there increased EMF to Board Member Philip's comment?
And why you're asking the principals all kinds of things after this meeting, you should ask. I mean, do we know of any sites that have these installations that we're not aware of? Probably the answer's no, but, I mean, you didn't know this one existed, and so here we are, right?
Also, I don't think Air Touch Cellular Inc. is a corporation anymore, which is the signatory here.
All right, so we're going to table this? R3D?
There's a motion to table.
Yeah, do we have a second to table?
I'll second.
Okay, so if you would like to table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. It is now tabled, 5-0, R3D. R3F?
R3F, again, $27,000. Thank you to our, our parents, our PTAs. We had some generous donations from trust funds. You guys that donate are what makes our, one of the things that makes our district so special. So I always want to call it out and thank you for, for the donations. And with that, I move that we approve R3F.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes 5-0. R5A?
R5A is the residency based on parent guardian employment for 202021. Questions I've received from is, you know, how many students are actually taking advantage of that? And I was talking to enrollment today. You know, I'm sure probably the best way to do would be to say, Trent, how many of our students are, you know, here on the, on the Allen bill, and about roughly how many per year coming in?
Is that teachers and?
That is Allen Bill. That's all Allen Bill.
All of it, so.
Allen Bill does technically include employees of the district.
And it also includes the military families, right?
It does not. Military, military is separate. That is 132 students.
So I'm, I'm sorry, what'd you say the number was that are on the Allen?
Allen Bill, 355.
355.
Employee, 288. Grandparent, 37. Military, 132.
So less than 10% total. Allen Bill alone, we're talking about less than 5%.
And so if the, the 10 hours, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, just wondering how we came upon 10 hours as being the cutoff.
It's changed.
State law.
It was, yeah, it doesn't, and it was different in previous years, and it, you know, the 10 hours is, is at code.
Okay.
And when we went from 10 to 20 to 10, how many, how many additional Allen Bill?
We went from 15 to 10, very quickly.
Okay, so when we eased the requirement, how many more was it? It was like minimal, wasn't it?
I don't think it was significant. I mean, we've always kind of ran, you know, historically in these numbers about that, that range. I mean, I could go back and give you exact historically, if you prefer.
Would it be possible to, to just, to look into, you know, these, these people who are coming here on the Allen Bill, I mean, they are members of our community, you know, they are participating in our schools, they are worthwhile contributors, and just to, I don't know, is there a way to reach out and see, you know, PTA, you know, memberships and so forth? You know, one of the, the things that I always hate to hear is that, oh, you know, we let these people in, and they don't take part in our community. And to me, that's never been the case. And I was wondering if we have a way of getting any supporting evidence that, you know, are these people that do come in here are members? I mean, especially 288 are employee children, right?
Well, not only that, so I will say, not only do they participate, but we're talking about representing $7 million a year.
Oh, I, I understand.
In revenue. And not just, it's not just about the money, it's about being able to program classes, right? To have our, our classes, our electives, our programs. It's critically important to have kids for the program. So there's, in addition to diversity and, and everything else we talk about, just the fundamentals around being able to run program. It's, it's a critical part of our schools.
And to clarify, we have pretty strict language in there that's basically, essentially says, "For the needs of the district." We could deny based upon the needs of the district.
Space availability, yeah.
Right, so, you know, we are not allowing these students in and then overcrowding and having to hire new teachers to create a class. You know, these students, it's a, it basically allows us to, to fill a class that might have otherwise been empty, you know, or short, so that we can generate this.
Absolutely. It's strictly value-added for our district.
Right. Thank you. With that, I'd like to move that we approve R5A residency based on parent guardian employment for 202021.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Okay, so moving right along to S1, Williams Uniform Complaint Quarterly Report. That is presented as a information item. I don't think there's anything to add. And then, Surplus Technology Equipment, S2. Again, that is also presented as an information item. There's nothing to actually present unless somebody wants to mention anything. And now we are ready for the reports of the members of the school board. So let's start with Linda Reed.
Okay, well, I'm just going to have one topic, and that is my classified shadow day experience. I hit the jackpot because I got to spend the day at Mila preschool. It was so fun. I learned a lot about the role of the director and the teachers and the aides at the school site, what their workday is like, how they have to manage their breaks to keep the ratio of students in the classroom safe at all times. I visited all the different levels of the classrooms, including the, the little ones that get, get there very early in the morning. There are quite a few staff members who are products of the district, which is fantastic. Some from a long time ago, some recent graduates of the district, some getting their hours for their teaching credential, working at Mila, which is amazing too. They're all, really know the little ones really well. They know the ins and outs of them. I got to see the good, the bad, and the ugly when they had just been a turnover in January where new kids joined in, so there were still some little ones who were not happy about being left without mom or dad. And so, how the staff handled that with so much love for the little ones was really fantastic. I got to do centers, I got to finger paint, play with some of the little ones that were chatty, and it was really a lot of fun, but also really, really appreciate how hard these staff members work to make every day for these little kids really special. And also, the academic component of the four-year-old program was really great, that they did centers just like kindergarten classroom did too. And so that was wonderful. And speaking of foreign language, there was also a teacher who did some instruction in Spanish, which was, which was really great too. And I don't have any photos, because we don't take photos when we visit the preschool, except for of their art project. So that was it. It was really great. I highly recommend it if any of you ever have even just half hour, hour of time to go see the site over there. There's some really outstanding staff members, lead teachers, as well as, as classroom aides, who really do a great job getting our kids ready for kindergarten. And that was it. That's all I'm going to share.
I'm Rick.
I'll have more than shadow day, but I'll start with shadow day. So I had the opposite end of the age spectrum from Linda. I had the opportunity to visit the Life Skills Center over at Palace Verdes High School. And there aren't that many kids in that classroom, but that classroom is, has kids in it who all have IEPs, who are at the higher end of the spectrum of need, and who are actually 18 to 22, which is still our responsibility to educate if there's special needs. They are incredible people in that classroom, very dedicated. My host was Leah Larson, who was part of the basis team there, and also Kendra and Daniel. Daniel's the special ed teacher in the classroom. And I think, you know, what's, what's really striking is how different each of the kids are. There's really a wide spectrum of abilities and needs and, and circumstances for each of the kids. And, but it's still a community. And so they do some common activities that benefit the school as a whole, like the Sea Brews program, where they actually deliver coffee around the campus. Also, they run a recycling program, which is getting more difficult since there's, aren't as many recycling centers to actually take, you know, the recycled items. But it's really a great program, and, you know, like TTI, which serves that same age population, but a population of kids who are, who are more functional. It's really tuned towards the needs of those individual kids. And we, I think we do a really good job with, with that population. So appreciate the time that everybody spent with me there. One suggestion for next year, I'm hoping Joan continues this program, because I think it's very valuable, is that we try and stay away from the end of semester, end of trimesters when we're at sites, because this happened to be during finals week, so it's not quite as representative as a normal day there. But, and I think it was a great experience. I'm glad that Joan started it, and I look forward to doing it again next year. So I wanted to move on to another topic. Big fan of people voting. We have an election coming up, March 3rd. Normal registration for that election closes on February 15th. If you are going to be 18 by March 3rd, 2020, you can vote in that election. If you are 16, you can preregister to vote as soon as you turn 18. And I encourage all our students who are 16 or older to make sure that they are preregistered or registered. And I encourage everybody who's going to be 18 on March 3rd to vote. And I wanted to make sure that people vote based on facts. I know that people get opinions from many different places. The PTA held a forum at the library on the 20th, which 35 or so community members attended, but it's important that everybody gets the facts. So I want, I wanted to make sure that, that the community was aware of some facts about past bonds and about the fiscal management of the district. So in 2000, we passed Measure K. That tax would roll off in 2027. In 2005, we passed Measures R and S at the same time, and that tax will roll off in 2035. The combination of KR and S, if you look at your tax bill for this current year, leads to an assessment rate of $23.59 per $100,000 of assessed value. This is the point I want to emphasize. $23.59 per $100,000 is the lowest. Not one of the lowest, not below average. It is the absolute lowest tax rate of any unified school district in LA County. So keep that in mind. If you want valid facts, come to ask any member of the board. Ask Alex, ask Keith. They'll be happy to give you the facts. And I think, you know, people should make sure they know the facts. In terms of administrative standing, we talked about the SARCS, all right? So one of the pages in here talks about administrator salaries versus the overall statewide average. We're at 4% overall statewide, 5%. So I think we do a pretty good job controlling that. In terms of the board, not the board class, but district-wide course, another information item that I emphasize, I think is a great source of accurate financial. item that I emphasize, I think is a great source of accurate financial information on the district is the unofficial actuals. So if you looked at our 17 to 18 unofficial actuals and you looked at the district-wide support services, they totaled 13.866 million and represented 12.61% of our general unrestricted fund. Look at 1819, the costs went down despite COLAs and everything else because this board has taken action to reduce spending in the district, and the costs went down to 13.62 million, and it was only 11.93% of the overall general unrestricted fund. So I think that, you know, before people look at claims about how we spend, they ought to actually look at how we actually do spend and look at the trends that the district has. And we're not Manhattan Beach. We have reserves. We actually ran at a surplus last year of about $2 million this year. Not quite looking at a surplus, so between the two years, it's gonna be basically balanced. And having a balance budget has been a, a big important goal of the board, and I think that we are working effectively to prudently fiscally manage the district.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Matt?
I'd like to thank Joan, as other board members have done, for putting together the, the Staff Shadow Day. It was a, a great experience. I was looking forward to it. I was going, knew I was going to go help with maintenance and operations. Figuring I was a new guy, I thought they were gonna make me carry all the heavy things. I wasn't, these guys, they are, they're terrific. It's, there's this really big guy and there's a really little guy, and they worked out perfect because like all the, the tight areas, the little guy's gotta go in. All those, the heavy stuff, the big guy carries. And they joke with each other all day long in the truck, and they're just, they're an excellent team. I had so much fun with them. You know, I don't think people understand, you know, how much we do with so little. We have three guys essentially who are doing all the little projects. That does include the plumbers and electricians, you know, the specialty trades. But three guys who basically, when you have something going on at your school, three guys go out there and take care of it. There's two to three requests per school per day. There's like 54 requests per day and three guys. I'm like, holy cow! So Terry Kobiyashi has this excellent, you know, log, like how he tracks it, how he delegates it. And, you know, they'll go out there and they'll try and do things. And if they're out there, they'll try and, you know, hit multiple, you know, items at the same time because they're in that geographic location. But you're talking about hanging signs, right? Like, oh, first thing we're gonna do is hang signs, and it was hanging signs saying, you know, schools are closed, you know, no dogs, so forth. And you would think, though, that's not too hard, right? Until you realize that all of our fences are different, so all of them have different mounting, you know, you have to mount it differently because some are raw iron, some are chain link, some are brick walls that you have to drill into the masonry. And, and the whole time, they're, they're going through it and, you know, making sure that it looks good and that it's gonna stay. Then we went on to hanging a projector screen over at the Peninsula Library, or Palos Verdes Peninsula Library. And you realize that that is a solid concrete wall. I don't know how many of you have ever drilled into a solid concrete wall? It takes time and it takes patience. And one of those little bits dropped and that puppy was hot. But these guys, you know, they're, they're doing it and they're, they're talking to the teachers, they're talking to the staff, trying to be as inconspicuous and as courteous as they possibly can, making sure that this stuff gets done and it gets done right. And then we were, we finished up the, the afternoon, my time with them, by removing these huge cabinets from RDM. I mean, these puppies were about eight feet tall, six feet wide, made in the good old days of solid wood, not this MDF stuff. It must've weighed, you know, a ton each. But, you know, unscrewing from the wall, loading them up, putting them on the truck, taking them out, dumping them, I had a lot of fun. I told them that, you know, if it, I'd come hang out with them because they're just, they're, they're that good of guys and they do that good of a job that I was, I was proud to be with them. So I really want to thank them for, for what they do, for going above and beyond. And they are our ambassadors out there. I know Joan made a little reference to it, but people will come up and they'll talk to them. They'll say, okay, well, what about this? What are you guys doing now? You know, I, I don't like what's going on down there. And these guys smile, they're polite, they help where they can, they sympathize, but they are, they're, they're true representatives of our district. And, you know, when we had our Staff Development Day back last year and you saw all the, the long-tenured employees or maintenance and operations and, you know, by being with these guys, you can see why. They are truly just good people, hard workers, you know, they, they come in, you know, they eat their lunch in the warehouse and I was just, I was, I felt very privileged to be able to spend my day with them and I learned a lot and, and thank them for allowing me the opportunity to do so and hope Joan does it again because I would love to do it. That's all I really have.
Thank you.
I was not able to do the shadowing day, but I would love to, to try to do that in the future. I'm glad to hear that Ridgecrest had fun at Camp Paly, so that's really good to hear. First intermediate schools doing the outdoor science camp, so that makes me happy to hear. I will be visiting some schools on Monday, so I will be visiting Cornerstone, Silverspur, and PVIS all day, so that will be fun, too, to get some schools in. So I'm excited to see what they're doing over there. Rick, I've also visited the life skills class at PV High and totally agree with everything that you said about the amazing program that they have running over there. And I didn't realize that it was 18 to 22-year-olds as well and, and the different levels between life skills and, and TTI, and they really do a great job at PV High along with Tara at the, at the Penn Mall. So just echoing that, but that's it for me.
Okay. Very good. And last but not least, so I wanted to make a mention, I did mention it earlier tonight, but I wanted to repeat myself that after our last meeting last, two weeks ago, that the staff took to heart our comment about indexing our meetings. So you can see the last meeting is indexed, so if you want to watch a certain part of the meeting, you just click on the link and you can watch that part. You don't have to watch the whole thing and then try to guess where we talk about different topics. And it took a little bit of effort, but we're hoping that they can do that for future meetings and that it will get easier for them and that we will make it, you know, just even a little bit easier to find. So I think that's important. That's a great advancement that we're doing that's not gonna cost us anything. And it goes hand in hand, honestly, with the binder in the back of the room that has every attachment from the meeting that we did not start doing until Linda was the president and last year. And I am very, really just very proud of some, some of these things that we've done because they were not done before, and we are trying to give people every opportunity to find the information that they want to find, you know, in our, in our school district. So I appreciate the effort on the indexing and if anybody doesn't understand how to find that, they can always call somebody on the staff and, or us, and we will help you figure that out. I was able to go visit the central kitchen. So the central kitchen is located at Merelus Intermediate School, and that is where we make the food for all of our schools, except the high schools, I think. And I had been there before, but I did spend much more time. And so in the central kitchen at Merelus, that's where the food all comes in, and then it gets portioned out and then it gets sent out to all the different sites all over the hill. And some of the interesting things to note, again, the staff there, truly remarkable, right? So every single person has had a great experience with our very hard-working staff that does so much with so little regardless of the department that you're part of. That is just the way this district rolls. It's, it really does make you feel like not a dollar is wasted because our people are so conscientious. And the central kitchen makes some of the food that we serve our kids, and some of the food comes in and they just disperse it out depending on what it is, but they have these very large plug-in ovens. So everything gets, you know, fixed up, puts in these giant ovens, and then the ovens get loaded on the trucks and the trucks go all over the hill delivering the food to all the sites. And then they plug them in on the site and they stay hot till our kids eat them. The day I was there, there were no pictures of me, but we did, I have a lot of photographs of the meatballs and the meatball sandwiches. And I hope you eat lunch either at an elementary or middle school when you go next Monday. So be sure you eat lunch. I think it's very good. We even have vegan...
I did it, I did it at Ridgecrest. I, there was chili that day.
Oh, okay. I ate at Ridgecrest, too, when I visited, but they, they do even have a vegan option.
That's awesome.
So who knew, right? So that's exciting. We really accommodate all kinds of kids with all kinds of issues, including vegan options. So every day. But at the elementary staff, there are two people that are in charge of getting the food out to our kids, and one person works three and a half hours a day and the other person works two and a half hours a day. And that is the entire amount of labor that goes into feeding all those kids at every school site. I think that's pretty remarkable, actually. And they take the money and they get the food ready and they clean it all up. So if anybody hasn't eaten at one of our sites recently, I encourage you to go eat there. I think the food is substantially better, honestly, than it was five years ago. I think we're working really hard to give kids options that they like. The meatball sandwiches were great. And what I can say is that the kitchen at Merelus looks just about the way it did when they built it in the 60s, I think 65. It has many of the original cooking devices, right? So they have these giant steam kettles, which not, they're, seem, these are huge steam kettles, right? So one of them still works and that's what we use to make sauce. We have a giant dishwasher that you actually could like roll a car into to wash, and that is the original dishwasher. We still, it's pretty big. You could, you could definitely put a smart car in there. It's pretty big. Or that little BMW, that electric one. It's a very large, this is not a small dishwasher. So what I, what I talk to people about how, you know, inefficient a lot of our schools are, it's because we have original equipment that we're, that still works and we're still using it at so many of our sites. So the opportunity to decrease water usage and electricity usage would be great if we would get the money to replace some of these things. So that was my shadow day, and I just wanted to end our meeting with asking the board members to provide me with written, or you can call me, but written feedback about anything that you want to make sure I know that you care about. I, I already heard what everyone said about AP Day and AP and homework. I have lots of notes, but I'm working with Lindsay on scheduling those extra meetings in the spring. And so if you have, so anything you want to share with me that I don't forget or that what I'm still struggling with, and we'll, we'll figure this out, is really what we're gonna try to get from those meetings, right? Because we could literally agendize them over and over and over and have conversations that don't go anywhere. So we really want to get someplace with those conversations and decide what it is we really want to do, change, maybe do not, maybe not change anything, I don't know. But now would be the time to share with me your input so I could properly plan those meetings. Okay? So this, planning meetings, being the president, it's really, I knew it was gonna be harder than it looked because Linda made it look so easy. Okay, so with that, it is nine, I'd say 13-ish, 9:14, and the meeting is adjourned.